This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. I'm going to start with an announcement because I see a lot of new participants. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you've been recognized. I do not have a wooden gavel at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so that the person who has the floor can be heard. We'll now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you'd like to do that. If you look at on my screen, it's the top right corner. There's a cartoon text bubble. When you click on that icon, you'll see a strip appear on the side of your screen. Please type into that strip, your request to speak. I will first look to questions from those who are participating digitally, you know, through an app or through a computer. Once I've heard from all logged in digitally, I'll see comments from those who have dialed in. If you intend to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and your address. For the record, we will have an executive session at the end of the meeting. And during that, I'm going to ask those who are not participating in the executive session to leave the meeting. If you don't leave the meeting, I'm going to kick you off. And then we will lock the meeting for the executive session. During the executive session, you can log back into the meeting. You will be in the waiting room. When we come out of executive session, we'll let you back into the meeting. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Fishbein.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Shortell.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa. And Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Gervoni.
Here. Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion on those items remaining on the consent agenda. I believe we note that the minutes, is that three I are amended?
Yes, three I. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept the consent agenda items A through G and I as amended and J.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing all ayes, the consent agenda as moved passes on to item four. The item removed from the consent agenda is item 3H. Mr. Vice Chairman, may we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and counsel, I motion we approve the adoption of the fair housing resolution for the town of Wallingford.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. That was Counselor Fishbein on the second. Counselor Morganstein, this was your item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to look up the Fair Housing Act as I found it previously on the website, and it really looks like nothing has changed. It looks like this is the mayor's item. I wanted to ask if I can, Mr. Mayor, what has prompted this resolution? What actions are we taking to fulfill fair housing in Wallingford?
Yes, Gina, the, the purpose for the resolution is we need to complete our application for a project at Ulbrich Heights Housing Authority location. And in order to have all of the documentation, we follow the rules of the Department of Housing, State of Connecticut, and one of those is the adoption of the fair housing resolution. This is done every time we apply. It's an existing resolution of the, of the community. We approve it again as per the instructions from the Housing Department.
All right. So this prompted me to also look into, I would say that fair housing also in my mind has some to do with affordable housing. And certainly, the Housing Authority is managing the affordable housing we have in town, elderly, some low income housing. And I discovered that we do not, I don't see action that we have taken with states requiring an affordable housing plan from the municipalities. Could I take this opportunity to inquire about that?
We are, we will be as soon as we have a town planner initiating the writing and the preparation of a policy. I believe it's due next year. And we have a town planner who's been hired. He hasn't arrived yet to take over the position, but that will be his, one of his assignments. We have a number of good regulations on planning and zoning, on the books for planning and zoning, and perhaps they can be improved on, but that, that will be an assignment of his.
So in looking at what we have for affordable housing, we certainly are by statute low on that. And that was going to be my next thing was that we've been close to a year without a town planner. So that's news to me that we have hired a new town planner.
Yes, that's correct. We have offered the position. He's accepted and we're expecting his arrival, hopefully in the near future.
And that's again, a full-time position?
Yes, full-time.
Yeah. Okay. Well, again, that comes as information to me, and I wouldn't have been included obviously in that. So that is not my thing. Because certainly having trained staff to work with the commissions and putting this, my understanding is it's, you know, quite a complex process. And so I am glad to hear after a year without a town planner that we now have that in place. Because the resolution to me looks pretty pro forma, you know, we want to do this, we want to do this. And we certainly are living in times that are requiring people to get some help. And I think that as we're looking for development and as we're looking to plan our future, as well as retail and business and the EDC, this is certainly a very important issue. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I see nothing in the chat bar. Any questions or comments from the public? Well, that's not one of the platform. Seeing if I can identify. All right, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Call the roll.
And you were getting.
I got it. I just found it.
All set?
Thank you.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Gervoni.
Yes. Motion passes. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Moving along, we have the public question and answer period. Again, please type in the chat bar if you'd like me to call on you. Bob.
Good evening, Chairman Gervoni. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. The mayor just brought up that he hired a new, or is in the process of hiring a new planning person for the town of Wallingford. Has the mayor hired, this question to the chair, to the mayor then, has the mayor hired a new person to replace Scott Hanley at this point in time?
No, we have not hired any, anyone in government television.
Are you looking to hire anybody for government television?
The position and the operations department are still under review.
I remember asking this question a couple of months ago. I was just wondering, do you know when? Because it's an important position. I think he's leaving soon if he hasn't already left. I mean, you would know better if he's left or not, but I don't know.
He is still in the position right now, and I cannot determine at this point what the timetable is.
And the person who makes the decision on hiring to replace Mr. Hanley, or whoever's in that position, would be you, or does the council decide that?
That is part of the administration. It is determined ultimately by the mayor's office.
So because if you decide not to hire, then how would that run?
It's all part of the review of what will be a final determination.
I just know based on my past experiences, Mr. Hanley, very professional and is, but I'm sure you would hire somebody very professional also. But the hours that are put in to do the quality of the work that he does and provides the services to the town, I would hope that you would find it a position that should be replaced. I mean, it's a very important position for transparency in government. So everybody can see what's going on, especially in this last year where people are pretty much homebound. I see that they're doing more meetings online and they are broadcasting them through, through the services that he provides. I would see it be a great loss for the town of Wallingford in transparency in government if you don't replace him with a full-time position. Can I just follow up with that then? Since you hired a new person, because I've always wondered about this, because this came up in the paper the other day, when new people are hired for the town of Wallingford, especially in management positions, do you have FOI training for those people?
We have a number of, of training issues and directives. FOI would certainly be part of it. And we look to have everyone as informed as possible with regard to all of the requirements of the position.
So, so if you do FOI, then you would do ethnic, ethic, ethics and diversity training for all new hires too then?
Management does have a requirement to take those training courses, yes.
And how about, how about just general hires, non-management level for all?
Well, I believe the HR department, human relations has provided training where required by the state across all of our employees, sexual harassment being one of the.
Yeah, that's just one of a diversity program. That would be one. Do you order a broad, offer a broad spectrum? And it's not just what the state issues. You can go up and beyond what the state would offer to make the town more aware of diversity in the community by offering it. And also FOI, that's something that you, just based on what was in the paper the other day about.
I believe we certainly, where, where offices are directly dealing with the public on a frequent basis, I believe there has been training there from HR again regarding.
No, 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 the public.
Versatile training.
Public doesn't, just because you deal with the public shouldn't preclude you from, just because you don't deal with the public shouldn't preclude you from having diversity training. Your workforce should be diversified, and you should be working with a diverse workforce. Just a male and a female's diverse, two different, so you shouldn't, oh, it's not offered to everybody unless they're, deal with the public?
We offer the training, we offer training as required by the state of Connecticut. At this point, I can't, I don't have a, a information in front of me indicating who has received all of the training, but we certainly offer what is required by the state and where, where there are other issues that arise, training is part of the solution to it.
Before an issue arises, that would be the whole point of having training. That would be the whole point of having safety training on a job, police department to handle a gun, safety training. These are why diversity training to have, how to deal in certain situations, ethical training, how to deal in certain situations, and FOI, how to deal in certain situations. Or everybody should be, have those skillset. And it's just lacking on the government then if they're not offering those to the citizens, to the workers in the town of Wallingford, and whether they're dealing with the public or not, because the workforce is diversified in itself. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
As I stated, we do whatever we can. HR has provided those training programs, and where they can be augmented, we can certainly look to do that. But we also need time for people to be working.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, that's kind of, it also helps de-escalate problems in the workplace by having these trainings, which would, to your point, save time in the workplace. It wouldn't bring up these issues. It's a small process. I can tell you that from when worked at a large national corporation, every year and sometimes multiple times a year, we had these types of trainings. And I'm sure some of the, some of your people on the council that work for large corporations will have the same thing, diversity, sexual harassment, ethics, all those types of training. And it goes a long way in dealing with the public. And it also would save the town from potential down the road. If there is ever an issue, and they said, well, we've never had, been trained in those types of things, well, you're going to get sued. It's your life though.
One of the recent interruptions has been all of the COVID, which makes training extremely difficult. And we, we are very conscious of that as well. The safety of the employees involved with that as well.
I appreciate safety employees, but Mr. Mayor, we're in the year 2021. Diversity training is not a new issue. It's been going on for years. This isn't the first time I've mentioned diversity or ethic training. And for the town, it just came up because you mentioned the new hire and everything like that. I'm just surprised. And, and you could do it even in these times, because you have this thing, well, you're using GoToMeeting. They have this thing called Zoom. There's, there is technology that people can do it. You don't even have to have a classroom. You can do it online, one-on-one settings with tests and so forth. It's just, I find it very lacking on the town not to provide these skillsets for its employees and to de-escalate, potentially discale, de-escalate situations that employees can get into. It would just be better for the whole town overall. And I would hope that the council would bring this up to the mayor at some point. I understand your hands are tied, but I think if more people would ask for it, maybe you could have it, and it would help certain situations in the town. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as I stated, the town does have training, including diversity.
You, you just said only for certain people, not ongoing. It should be every year or more than once a year.
Mr. Gross, if you would.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, is your question a general question or is it about the ordinance?
Sorry, I, my mistake. I thought we were starting the public hearing. Never mind.
Okay. Mr. Morganstein?
Yes, good evening. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. My question is through the chair to the mayor, please. We were talking about the fair housing resolution, and right now, I wanted to know if the mayor could give us any update. Presently, there is a court case that's still pending. It's the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities versus the town of Wallingford. Couldn't he comment on that? That's an ongoing case. And I'd like to see if he would comment too on, you know, what are we doing to make fair housing and live up to the resolution, other than just having the words passed every year or so?
The complaints, issues that arise, come to the mayor's office, and administrative aide Joan Stave is our officer for this, and she makes sure that people are aware of their rights, the agency to apply to, and, and what resources are available to them.
But here we are with a case that's been going on, I think it's close to two years. And what kind of training does ZBA members, planning and zoning, other people have in terms of knowing fair housing and how to handle these things? And again, we're without a town planner full-time.
Well, the primary issue for a department would be to be in touch with the law department. We we, I believe, make all information available, not, I don't daily deal with that subject, but we make every effort to see that people are treated fairly.
And the thing is, is that we've known for quite a while that, like most towns in Connecticut, we fall way below to 10% affordable housing that the state would like everybody to have. From the 2020 census, we were at 4.47 affordable housing. And it's been at that level for quite a while. Can you explain, how can we have fair housing without affordable housing? And what we're doing to change that besides starting on a study that a lot of towns have already completed, including Essex, and I believe Simsbury and other ones that you could find online?
The town has a series of regulations and planning and zoning regulations that encourage a range of housing, or I believe our incentive housing zone does the same. We certainly have made it a, an important priority, and it provided regulations for developers to take advantage of that. In recent years, there have not been a lot of residential development, single-family homes, at least. We are getting to more of the multifamily and apartment projects, one recently having gone up on Parker Street. But certainly, we have made an effort in the past. We will continue to look to provide the means for affordable housing to be constructed in the community.
I guess that's great to hear, but the problem is, is that we've been stuck at this level for quite a long time. Is this study that we have to complete by 2022 going to really make a difference? Is there going to be any teeth in that plan? Is there going to be any teeth in this resolution to make that goal a reality?
I'm not sure what you mean by teeth. Can we force developers to do something? No, we, I'm not aware that we can do that. We can provide incentives for that to happen, which we have endeavored to do. But if you're talking about ordering someone to build a certain type of housing in town, affordable or otherwise, no, we don't have that authority.
Yeah, again, you can't force somebody. The question is, is that it seems that we've been at least content to rest on whatever incentives we've had and not tried to push beyond that. And the results aren't promising in terms of changing that. I'll let it go at that, but one final thing is, can you say anything about where we are in that court case that's challenging us on fair housing and human rights?
I don't have any details on that right now.
Is there any timeframe for settlement or a conclusion?
As I stated, I'm not familiar with the details on that.
Okay, thank you.
Comment from Jacqueline, if you'd like to identify yourself, name and address for the record.
Yep, Jacqueline McFarlane, Kondraki Lane. I'm just curious, I'm glad to hear that we have hired a town planner finally. Could we get some background information, maybe their name, previous position, and if they had a specific area of focus?
I prefer to be speaking about the individual when they arrive. The position has been offered, I believe, accepted, but we, we do not have the person here as yet. And I don't want to be talking about someone without, without having them actually coming to work.
Just to clarify, Mayor, this is, this is the town planner who deals with our, our planning and zoning department. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. McFarlane?
Nope, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Glidden?
For the record, Mike Glidden, 29 Palmory Avenue. Mr. Mayor, I think you didn't really answer the question from Mr. Morganstein. We'd like an update concerning the case involving Abigail and Christian Gilbert. It looks like it's proceeding to trial. Is that, is that correct?
As I stated, I'm not familiar with the case, and I can offer no, no facts or opinions.
My concern, and I think the council should be watching this, is that this is a, this is a fair housing and American disabilities claim against the zoning board of appeals, which has severe ramifications when it comes to settlement. As a taxpayer, we could be looking at a settlement that is significant monies that we may have to pay out. By what's been said and so far filed in the court documents, I strongly urge the counselors to keep an eye on this and also demand for an up, sorry, excuse me, an updated executive session where you can probably discuss this in further detail. The second question I have is that, Mr. Mayor, the town applied for funds for developing affordable housing plan, which is required under 830J of the general state statutes, correct?
Have we applied for the funds? Is that your question?
I believe we were awarded a grant about a year ago to develop a plan. Is that correct?
There's a requirement we develop a plan. I'm not familiar with a grant that we've applied for.
It was about a year ago, right before our, the previous town planner left. I remember that, that the town of Wallingford applied for a grant to fund the development of the affordable housing plan, that is required under 830J of the general state statutes. And I just wanted to know the status of that, because those grant awards are only valid for one calendar year. So we applied for state funds to develop an affordable housing plan with the intent of increasing affordable housing units in Wallingford. And instead of taking that initiative and jumping at it, we have let that die on the vine. And I know that it's a planning and zoning matter, but this is a larger matter when it comes to affordable housing, when it becomes, when it comes to just diversifying our housing stop and providing economic opportunities for individuals for Wallingford. And it's a failure on this, on this council, not just Planning and Zoning Commission, for not pursuing this and updating it in a timely manner, rather than waiting till the last minute deadline. Because there's several communities have completed their affordable housing plans already. And I think that, you know, And I think that, you know, we can't stick to the Wallingford timeline, which is just always pause on the video play. Thank you.
Chairman, just, I believe we intend to do it in-house. And I am not aware of any grant being applied for. And certainly, we need the town planner in order to be part of that exercise.
Next up is Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Ben Martin, 329 Ward Street. Just based on Larry's question about what are we doing for fair housing and low income housing? The response was that we can't force the developer to do to create housing. We could, however, hire a developer to build low income housing. That is within the power of the Wallingford government to do that. So like acting like it's impossible because we can't afford a business to do it is not true. We could do it ourselves and have a property that provides low income housing to people and brings money into the towns through the rents on those low income housing. So I would just not dismiss it out of hand that the town can do anything about this other than offering incentives. The town could hire someone to build this themselves, and I would recommend that they do that. Thank you.
With that, that is all the time we have for a public question and answer. Moving along the agenda, Mr. Civitelli, the town health director, is giving a COVID-19 presentation virtually that's being put on by the library right now. So he's not available for our COVID-19 update. And on to item seven, which is to consider and act upon an ordinance amending chapter 151 regarding parks and park facilities, section 156.9 of the code of town of Wallingford. The proposed amendment to the ordinance as a last sentence to 156.9. And that last sentence is that facility permit fee structures, including waiver provisions, require the approval of the town council. Fee structure changes will take effect 30 days after action by the council unless the council determines otherwise. Ordnance Committee Chairman Fratell, would you like to add anything before I go out to the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think just some context that this did come before us last month. Counselor Marone sponsored it. And it was brought to us, basically, I think, in the spirit of some current events in the news around some possible, you know, changes to how different organizations are charged for using our parks. My understanding of this ordinance and reading it and how we deliberated on it is simply that we would approve, we have the authority to approve the Park and Rec Commission setting these fees. We're not going to micromanage. Oh, you got to charge the YMCA this or the Boys and Girls Club that. We're not getting to that level. We're simply approving these as they change over the years, just like we have the ability to. We could veto the electric rates within a certain time period. So there's a lot of other things like that. We already have the power to approve. So that's what this is doing. It is a power the council at one point in time gave to the Parks and Rec Commission. At this point, we're kind of taking back the final approval. But I would not call this a micro management. But anyway, that would be all that I that I can add to this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, this is a public hearing and I will first look to the chat bar for comments from the public. This is the public portion of the hearing. I'm going to give the chat bar a few another minute and then I'm going to go to the phone lines. Lots of interest from the council. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the, and maybe this ordinance, it sounds like this ordinance is not the whole thing of this, but if the goal of this is to or I guess the reasoning behind charging nonprofits is to raise money for the Park and Recs because they are lacking in some funding. I would guess I would say that, again, we come back to that if they are lacking in some funding, then the town council and the mayor could fund them without having to charge these nonprofits some fee if we haven't been charging them before. Again, if that's the reasoning around this change. I guess I would think that as a service of the town and to make people, to benefit the people in the town, allowing these profit nonprofits to reserve town properties without charging them would be a benefit to all of the citizens. So I don't see why in if there is a lack of funding for the Parks and Rec Department, we wouldn't just transfer them some money as we do other departments rather than asking them to asking nonprofits, which are benefiting benefiting citizens in the town to fork in more money. So I don't know if you're answering questions here, if this is just public comment, but I would just like to know what the reasoning behind asking nonprofits to put more of their money into administration or registering parks rather than serving people would be a benefit to the town.
Mr. Martin, that was not a council action that you're referring to. It was an action of the Park and Rec Commission. So nobody in the council can answer that question. I think this change in the ordinance was going to is intended to give the council the ability to review that decision.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see anybody else commenting in the chat bar seeking to make public comments. So I am going to temporary temporarily unmute the telephone callers just to see if any of them want to comment. All right, would anybody on the telephone like to make a comment during this public hearing? All right, nothing for the telephones. I will be going back to the digital participants. Just give me a moment. I think somebody's cleaning their kitchen on the phone. Chris Bishop, name and address for the record, please.
Hillsview Avenue, Christopher Bishop. Just for the record, would like to be known on the president of the Wallingford Cardinals baseball and softball. I guess my comment would be for the council is for many, many organizations in town, including our own. Having the ability to use these fields and these parks allows us to provide a service for so many of the kids and the youth in this town that especially in times like now really need whatever we can give them, considering how much time they spent away from family, friends, whatever the case may be. So counsel, I just hope you take that into your consideration when you come to your vote. Because there are many organizations that would be affected by the potential of the recent passing of the Park and Rec Commission fee structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Another question from Jacqueline.
Hi, Jacqueline, again from Condracki Lane. Just to confirm, the Parks and Rec budget has been cut over the years. Is that correct?
I'm not aware that that's an accurate statement. I mean, I think there's been some funding issues, but I'm not comfortable agreeing that it's been cut over the years.
What would you be comfortable saying? Out of curiosity.
I think the fund varies from year to year. One of the reasons why the the Rec Commission budget might have been reduced over the past year is because the pool wasn't going to open for the COVID season. I don't historically cutting the park and rec budget, but that's really not the issue before the council tonight. The issue is this ordinance that's going to give council the ability to review fee permit structures, waivers and such.
Right, and that was brought up because Parks and Rec is upping their fees, correct?
It, the recent issue isn't necessarily an increase in fee. It's it's changing who they're charging.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Morgenstein.
Good evening again. Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. I want to follow up on what Jacqueline was saying in that I think what we're looking at is that, as we know, that most costs seem to go up every year. And we've seen more and more situation where Parks and Rec and their their helpers are looking for ways to bring in more revenue to meet shortfalls. So I think if anything, what we're looking at is that if the fee structures are being looked at as a way to raise money, I think the problem is not so much that they're wielding this as an option as much as that we need to look at how they're being budgeted to meet the demands that as a town we put on them. So I would hope that we would be looking at not so much regulating them or overseeing them in these increases as maybe fighting for them to get proper funding in budget season. So that, again, they want to be looking for this to come to the town council if the town council oversees them. A quick question, if I could, to the mayor. Are we looking at any increases to budget to the Parks and Rec this year? Is that a possibility?
Well, most, most departments will be having an increase as a result of increased cost of everything. The budget the budget now does not reflect a number of contracts in negotiation. So that, that when the negotiations are completed, there will undoubtedly be some changes in in pay rates. So from one year to another, there's, there's always an increase.
Does it concern you that we're at a point where we are discussing the fees as a means of raising money? Is that of concern to you in terms of budgeting for them that this has brought about a lot of concern out of the public, nonprofits, it's been in the newspapers? You know, is this something that has really dropped on your radar as something that needs to be fixed is? There's definitely a need there and the Parks and Recreation is saying that there's maintenance that they're trying to make up for. So obviously, costs will rise, but is that just inflation? Or is there going to be enough to actually start meeting and getting through a backlog of maintenance tests there? That they're increasing fees to meet?
I'll respond by saying this, Parks and Recreation is not in charge of the maintenance of the parks and the facilities. That's public work. And most years, there is money in the public works budget increases in order to handle improvements to fields, et cetera. The new field, for instance, at Fragman Park was primarily a project of engineering public works. It obviously benefits Parks and Recreation because they are able to program the use of the field. So the user fees is what we're talking about, increasing the user fees. And the user fee pays schedule has long been in place. However, as the chairman indicated, it has not been applied to nonprofit organizations. Personally, I don't have a problem with user fees. I think they're appropriate in certain cases. But I think they're appropriate where there are particular costs that are increased by by the program that you're hosting. So user fees pay for, for instance, the instructors. So when an instructor for a program is offered, a program is offered and there's an instructor, then the fees very often pay for the instructor, at least partially, if not totally. So that's a good example of an increased cost in order for the program. Where I have concerns is where we increase fees and we really can't determine that there was an increased cost as a result of a specific use of a facility or or park. And then, then it can become, in my view, arbitrary and at, in my mind, not supported by the usual format for a user fee. But certainly where an organization has a particular impact upon a park facility, et cetera, and that that is logically assigned to their use of it, that's to make an appropriate user fee where we're just saying, well, you're there and we're going to charge you for it without any, any connection with incurred costs as a result of that use. I, I, I think we're beyond where we should be in terms of user fees.
And just one quick question and I'll let it go is are you saying directly that the user fees that are collected by Parks and Rec are never used for anything other than hiring instructors? It's never used for painting or any sort of maintenance or improvements to any of the park properties?
I didn't say that. I said that was an example. And if I think there certainly could be examples of of other types of uses for them, but the dominant the dominant means of maintaining the facilities in park and recreation is the public works department.
Yeah. Okay, you answered my question. I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Gory, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Gory, 15 Dana Boulevard. I'll just be very brief and just wanted to reflect a comment for the committee from a parent's perspective and a town resident perspective relative to the organization that Chris Bishop talked about, because that's where I have my experience. I'm involved in the program. I'm involved as an instructor, a coach, an equipment manager, anywhere I can help. Never been paid once to help in this organization. It's strictly volunteer. It is a nonprofit. Everything we do is for the kids that play in this program that are in this town. The program provides additional baseball for town youth. In addition to the two little leagues, of which it is mandatory by our program for these players to play in those little leagues so we can support all the town activities. It's basically extra baseball for those kids that wish to partake in that and go on to maybe play baseball at higher levels. There, we're putting kids in college. There's a college program in there where we can get we get kids scouted and kids have received scholarships. We have a couple of members in pro baseball right now. All for, all through a nonprofit organization where the cost is kept low enough that it's manageable for families to be able to do that. I can't say that there's no other town in Connecticut, but I haven't seen any other towns that have a program like this and that all funnel up to our American Legion program where the cost is so low that it's extremely affordable. Again, I can speak as a parent who pays for his his kids to play. It's a reasonable cost and it volunteers his time. There was times where I was coaching four teams a year volunteering. So I just wanted to say that, you know, increasing costs in a nonprofit like this, although we do have facilities and worked hard to get those at very, very reasonable costs, we don't, we don't operate for a profit. If our coaches receive any funding for their time, it's basically gas money. Because it is a travel program made up of almost 100% Wallingford kids. There might be that one or two that are outside that need a place to play. So I just wanted the committee to understand that an increase in cost could eliminate this program. And, you know, the ramifications of that would be very far reaching for our youth that that enjoy baseball. Over this last year, it's been a significant outlet where high school sports have been canceled through the Over this last year, it's been a significant outlet where high school sports have been canceled through the CIAC and the state. And, you know, baseball throughout the summer would be able to be played with certain amount of restrictions, of course. But it was a significant outlet for these kids. If this program did not exist, they wouldn't have that. And I just wish that the committee would take that into consideration and understand what the impact is on the residents and more importantly, our children that are benefiting from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Good evening, everybody. This is Sean Doherty. I'm the Executive Director for the Wallingford Family YMCA. Reside at 2 Windswept Hill Road here in Wallingford, Connecticut. And thank you very much for this opportunity to talk tonight. The Wallingford Family YMCA, as many of you know, has been a close partner with the town for over 76 years. Partnership is one of the key operating priorities that we abide by. When we're asked to help, whenever we step up to the plate, it never hesitate, no matter what the cost. Some examples of free programs that we offer the services in the residence of Wallingford include a warming and cooling centers to town residents whenever necessary. Cancer survivor programs free to town residents. At-risk mental health programs for teens, free, working with our public school system. A race for chase program, youth triathlon program in memory of the Sandy Hook victims, free to Wallingford residents. Free swim lessons to residents of low to moderate income. Free youth obesity and wellness program to town residents through the Wallingford Public School System. And we also offer emergency shelter guest passes, which are free for those shelter guests when they get out of the shelter. We use the Dulittle Park for our day camp. It is 45 days in the summer for nine weeks, and we use it roughly between 7:00 AM and about 4:00 PM. However, that is not the main basis for our camp. That main basis is 81 South Elm Street, where we use the pools, the gym, the racquetball courts, the property itself, the teen center, the kindergarten center. We only use the pavilion, the baseball field, the basketball court, and the tennis courts. And we don't use the play escape, so it's open to the public, and we don't want to be a burden by all means for town residents. We have the main, when we kick off the camp, we have all of our campers there, which could be between 250 and 300 in a good year, pre-COVID. And then we break them up into groups of 10. And at any given time, there's no more than 35 to 95 kids spraddled throughout the 15 acres of Dulittle Park. The YMCA is also a good steward of Dulittle Park. When our programs are at the park, they're supervision throughout, and that's for the majority of the day. And words off for any teams getting any mischief, especially during those summer months. There's programs that also go on at the Dulittle Park that come over and use the YMCA for free water fountains and use our bathrooms and all that kind of good stuff, no charge. It's more of our community spirit and outward spirit for those folks. We pick up after ourselves and others that have used the park. We have a comprehensive insurance policy in case anything goes wrong. And our programs are state licensed and inspected annually by the Department of Office of Early Childcare. And Kenny and John Golic, prior to him, and Tom Dooley, prior to him, all knew that they can reach out to the YMCA if anything happens to go astray, and we'll address it, and no problem. And be right on top of it and be definitely considerate of the use of the park that we have had entrusted on for so many years, 45 to 50 years plus. Also wanted you to consider adjacent Town, Parks and Rec facility rental property where priorities one and two, which is Town and Board sponsored programs and events, as well as local nonprofit organizations and local athletic and sports affiliated groups are not assessed general usage fees, and that's an adjacent town. Lastly, I just want to kind of wrap it up that, as you all know, this year's been a tough year. It's been with the pandemic. Over 430 nonprofits in the state of Connecticut have closed their doors permanently due to the financial impact of the pandemic, including two YMCA's. The Wallingford YMCA is still recovering and will be further rendered the year. We have a plan in place, but until the pandemic is over, we will be restricted because of the guidelines and the extra costs that go into operating. State unemployment rate is still high. Families are suffering throughout town. And as this continues, also food insecurities as well throughout the town. So we implore you to consider all of these aspects when instituting this change into the fee structure, and I could be available for a comment if you'd like. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ms. DeMeo, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Paula DeMeo, Colonial Lane. And I just want to make a comment regarding the what Chris Bishop had said about the Wallingford Cardinals. My son has been playing with that team now. This is his fourth year, and it's something that he looks forward to. And I would hate to have to take that away due to the increase in cost. He's been in the Little League and now in the majors and absolutely loves baseball. Part of the Wallingford team with the Cardinals, we travel to other towns. And I just, it's more of a comment. I can't tell you some of the fields that I see in the surrounding towns that we go to, how beautiful they are. The grounds are so well-kept, but part of it is the advertising that they have on their fences. And it's nothing that's offensive. It's local companies that put up signs or advertise at the field, and that's a perfect way to raise money. And for the past four years, I've been asking every single season, why doesn't Wallingford do that? Why doesn't Wallingford let some of the local businesses advertise at some of our fields and put up some decent signs to raise money to support these kids? A lot of the coaches that we have for the Wallingford Cardinals, they do this out of their own goodness for the love of the game and the love of the kids, and they don't take any paycheck. And I would hate to see the cost for the families that participate in those programs have to go up because of this. Thanks.
Thanks. When Counselor Chortel introduced the ordinance, you know, he gave a background. So the current regulation as it exists, ordinance 156.9 allows delegated to the Park and Rec Commission the ability to set permit fee structures for the various park facilities. All this ordinance does is it gives the council the ability to review park and rec actions. We are not making decisions tonight about fees, fee structures, or waivers. If this ordinance is adopted, and it appears to me that it will be, then the council will, after the appeal period passes, the council will have the ability to then review the Park and Rec Commission's fee structures. But the specific amounts being charged and how they're being charged, whether or not there's a waiver, that is not on the agenda tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that based upon some of the comments I'm hearing. The last public member of the public I have is Mr. Jason Michael. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Jason Michael, 81 Meadow Street, also a Park and Rec Commissioner. I just had a question regarding what exactly the council is is voting on changing the ordinance? Because I, sitting in and commented at length during the ordinance meeting that led here, and I was under the impression that this was, that you were adopting the, and rightfully so, adopting the power to review changes to the fees. I wasn't aware, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this was, had anything to do with adopting the right to veto who's charged or if someone gets a waiver. We took some painstaking hours in our last meetings to rewrite the packet, the permit packets, to also include the language about nonprofits to specifically address nonprofits that that occupy parks for consecutive days while also raising funds, taking in money.
Mr. Michael.
In other words, using the park and charging fee while using the park. So I'm just curious if if you're adopting the ordinance the way I understood it. I see now that you put up the waiver provisions.
Yeah, just to clarify, the part that I have very inartfully highlighted, that's the new language.
Okay. So am I to understand, because we had written into our permit packs that there would be, you know, a 30-day window for a nonprofit who receives word with their permit approval that there'll be a percentage of a charge from 0 to 25%. That they had 30 days to come in front of the commission and explain why they don't believe it's fair or are fine with it or would like it reduced or removed. And for us to go through the 30-day period with that and then to go in front of you seems a bit redundant to me. I just wanted to clear up whether or not, I mean, are one of us wasting our time, in particular us?
I would not agree with you that you are wasting your time with anything you do. I think the council values the work the commission does. You know, I think the intention of putting the 30-day provision in our proposed amendment is to just give it time to sink in and let somebody take some reactive action if necessary. You know, when Counselor Moreau originally proposed this language, he had put a six-month delay in. So that was negotiated back during the ordinance committee meeting where this language was then agreed upon.
Right. And so maybe I misunderstood. I was under the impression that you had 30 days to render your decision whether or not to accept our decision. I didn't know that. I didn't know that. So I guess I need clarifications. Is that 30-day period for, say, XYZ nonprofit wants to, you know, occupy a town park for multiple days? And we say, well, there's going to be a 20% park charge for that. And you're going to review each one of those and then wait 30 days?
We are not, this does not create a compulsory review. It gives the council the opportunity to review. So if a counselor finds out that you guys have made a fee structure change or, you know, a waiver provision or taken some action on something like that, the counselor can bring that to the next council committee agenda. The council can discuss it, take action on it, take no action, can approve it, can disapprove it. And then whatever action the council takes at our meeting, there's a stay of execution on it for 30 days after we've taken a vote.
Okay. I just think of how that would work with someone who wanted to rent a field or pavilion for multiple days in the coming days before your meeting. What, where does the decision lie then? Say someone comes to the Park and Rec says, you know, Director Michaels, I'd like to have, you know, Dulittle Park. I'd like to rent the tennis courts for three days, you know, next weekend for a tennis tournament. And you're not going to be seen by then.
I don't think that this is designed to deal with every use application.
Okay, okay.
This is not taking the opportunity to look at every individual action you take or permit you approve. It's for facility fee permit structures and waiver provisions.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up because I was, I'm starting to get confused as to exactly what the wording entailed. But thank you very much.
Mr. Martin, you know, Mr. Michael is not participating in this meeting in any official capacity. He commented as a member of the public, and I leave it up to him as to whether or not he wants to answer a question from you. We're certainly not going to debate present fee structures tonight.
I don't want to debate anything. I simply have an information question for him if he's willing, but if he's not, then it's fine.
No, no, that's fine. I don't want to waste the council's time. And we certainly have open discussion and public discussion at every Park and Rec meeting, which probably is a better place for this. But it's entirely up to the chair and everybody else here who's listening to this. But I can't say I'd go into great detail with an answer for anything. I would suggest that you get on our agenda and come on down to the next meeting.
That would be fine if that's what it is.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Small.
Yes. I think you took care of it, but you're not, you're not hearing individual applications. You are going to approve this structure, the fee structure and how waivers are processed. That's what's supposed to be presented to you for approval. You're not going to hear individual applications. There should be a process, a procedure which tells everyone how fees are determined, and that's what the council will decide.
Thank you. Last member of the public I have is Joe Frank. Full name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Joe Frankie, 25 Greve Trail. Thank you, guys, for hearing us tonight. I just want to reach out. I'm no longer affiliated with the Wallingford Family YMCA, but I was an employee there for eight years. I worked as a summer camp counselor for years. I ended up being the camp director for three years. I'd like to just, for the sake of the conversation, provide a little bit of insight into some of the some of the good things we did across the street from the Y at Dulittle Park, just for the consideration of council. You know, in talking to the Parks and Rec Commission about this at one of the recent meetings, I wasn't satisfied with any sort of justification for any sort of fee structure for nonprofits. The crude math that was done, there was nothing really quantifiable for this structure. One of the examples that was given was about potentially putting in a drinking fountain at Dulittle Park, and I know it was just an example. I guess I don't know where that crosses over into public works territory, but that's neither here nor there. Ultimately, at the YMCA, during summer camp, using the park, my question to the Parks and Rec was, as a result of the YMCA being there Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, you know, how many park permit requests were denied as a result of them being there? How much money were they really losing out on by that nonprofit using that area? And the answer was less than a dozen. I guess the answer wasn't really known at the time. It seems like there's not a huge amount of money that would be lost from, you know, keeping, you know, the town wouldn't be making if these programs were to stay in place. And I guess my question would have been, as a casualty of this proposal, if it were to go through, and let's say the YMCA could no longer use this facility, where would that money come from anyway? And is this the best way to make that money? What is the need for the money? You know, these are all questions that I really haven't heard a good enough answer for yet.
And, Joe Frankie, all due respect, you're not going to hear that answer tonight.
And I understand that. Yes, sir. I definitely understand that. These are things, like I said, I want the council to take into consideration when they're more just thoughts to keep in the back of your mind when you think, okay, is this something we want to approve? Do we have all the information available to us before we go and approve something that honestly is a pretty drastic measure, in my opinion? So, you know, I want the council to consider that. They're more rhetorical questions, but what is the need for the money? Is charging nonprofits who have used these facilities and done a lot of good for this town, is that the best way to get the money? I would just like everyone to keep that in their minds while they vote. So, thank you.
Going back to the council and ancient history on the chat thread, I think the first council question I have is Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do need to make a quick comment. I had a late start and was trying to finish up my dinner while the meeting was going on, and I noticed, well, right when I finished, I had my camera on for a short period of time. So if anyone was viewing me finishing my dinner, which could have potentially been very gruesome, I apologize for that.
Thanks for the show.
I caught the camera at the last minute. But anyway, Mike, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, that trying to direct the discussion tonight to the issue at hand. And that's simply the ordinance language, which is very concise and has nothing whatsoever to do with the current fee structures and any actions taken by Park and Rec and Recreation Commission, nothing whatsoever. That's not on the agenda this evening. So, and I'm not saying that to discourage the commentary we've had. That's not on the agenda this evening. So, and I'm not saying that to discourage the commentary we've had. I just want it. I don't want anyone feeling disappointed because we couldn't address their concerns in any action we're taking this evening. Which simply are we changing the ordinance? That's what's on the agenda tonight, period. Another thing I'm I appreciate you clarifying, but I'm also very concerned about among several is that enough, again, when we talk about ordinances, we can talk about intent all day long. We could talk history, we can talk potential. However, we'd like, but in the end, the only thing that matters is the actual language, period. Especially if it's not something that's open to interpretation. And the way I read what's before us, nothing in the language refers to the application of the fee structures or waiver provisions referenced. You did clarify that to a certain extent, Mr. Chairman, by saying it's not like we're going to be taking up applications, but more importantly, I don't see anything that even gives us the ability to file an appeal on behalf of an applicant. It's not there. That's step one. Secondly, how is it intended that this is going to be implied in practice? Is it retroactive? Does the current do the do? Does the Park and Rec and the Recreation Commission need to now, if we approve this tonight, did we need to retroactively approve what they did a week or two ago?
So, if I may?
Yes, please, because I have more. Go ahead.
Just at that point, I don't see the word changes before the word facility permit fee structures. It just says we can review them. I don't think there has to be an action. We can, you know, this, if this passes tonight, the appeal period is thirty days, thirty days from now, somebody can ask to put the rec commissions facility permit fee structures and waiver provisions on an agenda for review. So I I don't see that it requires them. It's it's not written to require them to take action for us to review it.
Okay, I'm not sure I agree with that, but all right, we'll we'll find out. But even if that were the case, that, again, all your own, what you're speaking of refers to the fee structure and the waiver provisions, not the application of them to any individual applicant. We are, that's not even in this language. So if next week, next agenda, one of us wants to bring up the current fee structure as it exists for discussion and potential approval or that potentially could happen. I don't think it can, but that's interesting. That's that one question. So I'm speaking, what's the effective date of this? As it applies to the fee structures they're they're they currently have in place. And that, I think, is a is a very important question. And secondly, I would only reiterate to all that nothing before us this evening, and in my opinion, in within the powers we may be granting ourselves, allows us to appeal any individual organization's situation. Any individual decision made by Park and Rec, I don't see it. And it's always the language that's before us that is really going to make the decision, you know, make the difference. So with that in mind, I I will, I will, I will cease. Thank you.
Councillor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so bear with me if I'm going to review a little history and again, trying to clarify things. So the commission, along with the director of Park and Rec, at some point came together with a possibility of charging some portion of the amount of fees to nonprofits. My understanding of what happened and the nonprofit with a national backing who has spoken here this evening made public that this discussion was happening and the public became aware that this nonprofit that wants to use Doolittle Park was being talked about in reference to usage of parks and having some amount of fees applied to their costs. And here we are now with the public and here we are now with the ordinance that we have we are considering here tonight. In speaking extensively with the Park and Rec, I have to disagree with the mayor that their costs of maintenance are on the Public Works Department, for example, benches. In this town, when things age out, we let them go and go and go until we replace them. And the Park and Rec Department is looking at things such as benches in every park needing to be replaced at considerable expense. And so they, in trying to be creative in the setting of the mayor's goal of zero budget, came up with this idea, and here we all are. One of the things that I think we need to be very cautious of, whether we pass this ordinance or not, is that we don't find ourselves giving money out of our budget to nonprofits, only to have the town then taking them back in fee structure. So my understanding is something such as the Little League really is not going to play into this fee structure. And again, everything that we're talking about tonight is just an ordinance, is not us saying I want to charge the Little League, I, you know, I want to do this or that to Boys and Girls Club or the Y or somewhere else. So the ordinance, though, we have to agree, us putting this in place and taking back the council having some involvement in this came about because of a consideration for initiating a fee structure to nonprofits being made public. So that is really where we're at, and whether or not the council taking it back is really what we're talking about. And I I'm not sure that I feel the need to second guess Park and Rec, and I appreciate them again, offering to the public, come to our meetings. It might be worth Park and Rec folks finding out whether your eight AM, I think they're on Wednesday, meetings are amenable to much of the public. Clearly, it's during your working hours, and when I've been to your meetings pre pandemic, they certainly weren't overly attended by the public, but sometimes the public may wish to. So in including the public in various discussions, you know, it might be worth a consideration of, you know, could we once in a while hold a meeting that is an after work hours rather than an early in the meeting, but that's a whole do. But again, I want to point out there are expenses that they did not feel were going to be covered in their budgetary allotment. And they were looking at creative ways to offset that, just like a creative way of advertisement on fields is also something that the ordinance committee has been tossing around for quite a long while. And the cat was let out of the bag. In my opinion, and here we are. So I just hope everyone feels clear on that. And then, again, I'm undecided on how I feel about taking it back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to start off with, I'm a little disappointed. I had expected a long time ago that councillor Testa had thrown out the point of order flag and rein this back in, only to find out that it's because he was eating his dinner, that that didn't happen. But moving forward from there, I think it's important to point out, because I think you pointed out a few times tonight, what we're dealing with here tonight has really nothing to do with whether or not nonprofits are charged fees or not. It is whether or not the council's going to have a level of control over something here. So I don't want anybody to think that a yes vote means that nonprofits are going to get charged or not charged or anything, because that's really not what we're doing here tonight. Moving forward from there, I want to talk about the language that is actually before us tonight. Because I read this to mean that, okay, we exist, we recognize that there is a fee structure, but it is and I don't mean this in the pejorative at all, illegitimate at this time, because it hasn't been, it hasn't been approved by the town council. Because sentence number one says, facility permit fee structures, including waiver provisions, require the approval of the town council. So if Park and Rec goes to charge someone a fee, they can turn around and say, okay, well, when did the town council approve that fee? Oh, well, they didn't. Okay, you can't charge the fee. So that's that's my understanding was they were going to come to us, this is our price list. You know, please approve the same. Any modification of that, which would be a structure change, would require additional approval, and then we have that thirty day window. So then we have the issue of waiver provisions, which came to our attention at the ordinance committee meeting that I I I believe, and you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, there were no written criteria, which, you know, I did express a concern about that because, you know, people are equal and that kind of stuff, and that opens up to possible unfair or unequal application, but that waiver provision would have to be approved by us also. And then any modification. And that's why I was a little disappointed that I think it was a few days after our ordinance committee meeting where we were talking about this. I learned from the press that Park and Rec meets and they approve things. And that didn't come up at our meeting. But I guess, you know, assuming that everything that I've said makes sense, my question is, when are we going to approve? Assuming that this passes, when would you anticipate us having this package before us for our review and approval? Because in the meantime, they really can't charge any fees.
Well, that's a great point. At the moment, they can. And you're right, once we, once we adopt this ordinance and and you know, what the appeal period will end on or about April twenty-third or twenty-second. Perhaps to legitimize the existing fee and waiver structure, we should have that become an agenda item on the meeting after the appeal period has expired.
Okay, that makes sense. I think that's all that I had, and I'm certainly in favor of what's before us and you know, I would hope that once that policy is in place, that the policy is utilized. And there would be no need for anybody to come before us or to petition us or look for a rule change. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Chertel.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, councillor Testa, I've been on a diet for six weeks, so I was staring at your box the whole time you were eating. Let me just tell you that. I don't know what you're eating, but it looked really good. Anyway, just a few random thoughts and responses to some other stuff that's been said tonight. I according to my data, I think Ms. McFarland from the public asked about the budget. And according to my data, the Parks and Rec budget came in, came to us last year about twelve percent less than the year before, and we took a little more off. We took about twenty-three thousand dollars more as part of our tax zero tax increase plan. So whatever that, just putting that out there, whatever that's worth. So I would say all the budgets, though, are online on the town of Wallingford website. If you go to government and then you go to departments and go to finance department, you'll see five years of budget data there. The books are there. I refer to them all the time. I'm watching this on my iPad. Usually my iPad's where I look at the budget, and I can't do it because I'm watching it on my iPad, but but that's my info from at least last year. So I I just, before I continue, Mr. Chairman, attorney small has asked to weigh in a few times, and I I actually have a question for attorney small, but I'm guessing that she's going to answer it. So Janice, do you want to go first? Because you've been you've been wanting to weigh in.
Um, if it's all right with the chair.
It is more than okay.
All right, I think, I don't know if it's the full moon, but I have to agree with councillor Man Fishbein. It is the this language requires the town council's approval approval of the fee schedule and a waiver provision. So once this becomes effective, they have to bring it to you for your approval. That has to happen. So it's not discretionary on anybody's part. And I agree with councillor Man Testa that there there is no appeal of, you know, a particular application to the council. Just keep in mind, you know, the recreation commission is an advisory commission in unless the council gives a power. So you gave them this power and the purpose of this change to the ordinance is to give them the ability to create what they think is a good fee structure and waiver provision, but the council must approve it. So I just want to clarify that.
I, if I'd known you were going to agree with Craig, I never would have even brought, talked to you. But okay, that's great. And that's that that helps, Janice. Thank you. My only other comments, you know, again, to reiterate, I think, whatever the councillor has said, just again, for everyone out there who's watching, all we're doing is deciding, does the council get oversight of this? Yes or no? We're not getting into whether we like the fee schedule that's changes or we don't like them. That's a net, that's down the road. I would offer, if anyone, like I know councillor Morgenstein said she's kind of on the fence. I I said this to ordinance committee, the council today approves all sorts of things, gets into all sorts of minutia. We, you know, or stuff that's not minutia. I mean, we have the ability to veto the electric rates from the PUC or any PUC decision for that matter. We have that power. The charter gives us the power to set fees that the town charges for services. On tonight's agenda, item three B, we literally approved use of the parade grounds tonight. So I mean, we've approved the use of the Parisi council chambers for the Wallingford Purity Theater on a number of occasions. So the town, the town council has exercised authority over town facilities all over the place already. So I, in my mind, this is a, this is consistent. Us, it's kind of inconsistent to me that we wouldn't have the power to at least overturn or a use of park fee. I don't know why we wouldn't, because we can overturn pretty much anything else. So in that spirit, I will support this, and I know I give credit to councillor Marone, who really took the bull by the horns with this, and and I I think it was a record, because I don't think anything's ever just sat in ordinance committee for one month and got into the full council. So that that's going to go in the Guinness Book of World Records for for Joe Marone, but that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up is the councillor who's been identified as the bullfighter. Councillor Marone.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bullfighter, bull talker, whatever you want to call it, but you know, when I first brought this up in front of the ordinance committee, so let me start by saying I like baseball. I love our parks. I think the park commission has the same sort of passions, right? From what I hear from the park commission, they're very passionate about our parks. In my estimation, any kind of user fee is a tax, right? And so unless you can direct the the fee to, as the mayor said earlier, unless you can direct the fee to what it is that you're paying for, then it becomes a tax. So it's if you're a town resident and I already pay taxes to maintain the parks, and then I go to use the park for a special occasion and I pay a special fee, that's an additional tax on it. So I think in some circumstances, that's warranted, but the town council, you know, to sort of break this down into its simplest parts, the town council is the taxing authority in the town. So to to farm out the ability to tax to some other group that isn't town council seems a little foolhardy in my estimation. So I just thought that this is a power, that at least the oversight of this is something that should come back to the town council. If the maintenance of the parks is an issue, which I hear the park commission kind of saying, and I kind of agree based on what I'm seeing, then that's a separate issue that's that can't really be addressed in the tax structure or in user fees as a tax structure. So if there's problems with the parks, maybe the council should take up how it is that we maintain the parks or perhaps a special fund to 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 maintain the parks. But I don't think there's anything creative about, you know, councillor Morgenstein, and no disrespect councillor Morgenstein, but she indicated that there was something, this was a creative way to raise money. Taxation is not a creative way to raise money. In fact, it's kind of the oldest way to raise money for government. So what I see is I see that I I know what the park commission is doing. I think that it's within their rights, within the power that they've been given by the council. I understand why they're doing it, and I don't I understand why they're doing it, and I don't necessarily think I would do it any different if I was in their stead, but I think that this is a power that belongs to the council. And do I think we should charge nonprofits to use the parks? You know, I think that's a question for the council to decide at a later date. I just don't think the council should give away its ability to decide who charges money to use the parks. Um, so if the issue is that the parks are in rough condition, then let's address that issue, but let's not address it by charging, you know, town residents to use the parks in a different capacity. So, so that's sort of where I was coming from uh with this idea, and I think that um uh this is one of the, as Counselor um Chertel identified, this is one of the few places where the council doesn't have oversight into an issue that has to do with raising money and taxation. So that's where I was coming from, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no more requests or comment in the chat bar there for uh, we need a motion on the ordinance.
Chairman, actually, um, I just, well, this is consumer. If Mr. Chairman allows it.
Go ahead. Somebody move the thing.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I moved that we approved the ordinance as proposed.
Second. Move and seconded plenty, uh, you know, I just saw this. I was about to call the roll. I'm going to allow Mr. Kenny Michaels to comment, and then we're going to call the vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I, I was trying to type quickly and just hit enter as you were all getting ready to, to go forward. So just to, to, to double back on, on Counselor Morone talking about fees going towards parks, um, that, that's currently the situation right now. So we have our, our special fund, which is our, our program revenue and facility revenue fund, which, as the mayor stated earlier, funds come in, they pay for either instructors, equipment for programs, and then park facility rental money comes in. Underneath that umbrella goes into our Parks Facility Fund. Now, that Parks Facility Fund, that money can be used, you know, for a multitude of different things in all of our park facility systems, as I've mentioned earlier. So as money comes in from pavilion rentals, field rentals, um, gym rentals, room rentals at Six Fairfield Boulevard, that money gets put back into the park system i- in regards to painting at Fairfield Boulevard, playground surfacing at parks. Uh, if we need to purchase picnic tables, which is, is going to be something that's coming up in the next three to five years is, you know, we're long due for an overhaul of picnic tables. If we can offset some of those costs by the user fees and not putting it into our budget request, I mean, that, that's what we're looking to do. So that's, that's already set up where park revenue money or park facility fees go into that special fund account, and then in turn can be used to upgrade facilities or replace equipment or replace benches or picnic tables or things to that extent.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Just one second. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yeah.
Morone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Xandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Sirhoni.
Yes. The motion passes, the ordinance is amended. Moving along. Item eight, Mr. Vice Chairman, may we have a motion, please?
Yes. I move we approve a bid waiver for Houston Galveston Area Council to enter into an interlocal contract with HGA by to obtain best pricing up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an ambulance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Morganstein gets the second. Uh, we have, I think we have the three chiefs, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is Joe Satin, our deputy fire chief. I'm going to speak on this topic. The fire department is asking for consideration and approval of a bid waiver to purchase a Fraser Limited ambulance through the HGAC, the Houston Galveston Area Council, uh, which is a cooperative purchasing. As the Wallingford Fire Department continues moving forward with its ambulance replacement plan, we would, we would like to continue standardizing on Fraser Limited as the ambulance manufacturer. Uh, after having two Frasers of ambulances in service for over three years, we feel that the Fraser offers the best platform for a long-term, reliable, and low-cost of ownership ambulance solution. Briefly, I'll describe HGAC. It's a nationwide government procurement service where local government units are eligible to become participating members of the cooperative. All contracts available to participating members have been awarded by virtue of public competitive procurement process. Currently, there's over eighty cities and towns in Connecticut that participate and purchase goods and services through this cooperative. Uh, we recently have used this purchasing cooperative to purchase a fire pumper in November of twenty nineteen, and that process was very smooth and provided us the best pricing available. Uh, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Questions from the council first. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two questions. I, looking in the um your letter that you submitted to us, um, one thing you say is that it's been brought to our attention that the best prices available for fire and emergency apparatus nationwide are obtained through this service. Um, how specifically do we know that? How do we know that the best prices are obtained through this?
The contract that HGAC uh enters into, they require that it's the lowest pricing available that they, that the vendors will offer to anybody. That's part of the requirement in the contract agreement. And when we go out and we check and we do bidding, or we check with other folks that aren't members, the bidding, the prices are higher. So we've been able to confirm that with fire apparatus and with the ambulances.
Okay. And then my other question, um, in, in bold print in the letter there, it says the purchase of the new ambulance for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that, is that something that um, is going to hurt us that we, we kind of put out there how much we're willing to spend, or was that something that was in the budget anyway that, that would have been able to be seen?
That's a precept price, counselor.
Okay, so that was in our budget?
Yes. It's already been budgeted.
Okay, so it was already there anyway. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the price for the, um, the vehicle, does that include it coming here, getting here?
Yes, Counselor, that's correct. Uh, delivery charges included.
Okay. Um, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's an important point. If we buy it, it should get here. Any, any other questions from the council? I see none. Any questions from the public? I see nothing in the chat box, and all of our dial-ins have left us. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yeah.
Morone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Xandry.
Yes.
Chairman Sirhoni.
Yes, that motion passes. The bid waiver is approved. Moving on to number nine, the fire department continues to have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you. This is Chief Higard, uh, fire chief. So thank you for the opportunity uh provided so that we can share how our department, uh, the Department of Fire and Emergency Services is staffed and how we got here. So staying somewhat with modern times, uh, we're just pulling up, I'm sorry, we're pulling up a presentation as well. So as that's happening, I'll start into my dialogue. Uh, so staying with modern times, the town's ambulance service was merged into the fire department on November ninth, nineteen seventy-eight. At that time, minimum staffing was twelve with two assigned to an ambulance. The manpower was assigned as one person in the fire dispatch center, two on an ambulance, and nine people assigned to the three fire apparatus. Highlighting the changes since that time include merging the fire dispatch center with the police dispatch center in two thousand. This change relocated the former dispatcher to a response position, which increased career fire personnel assigned to an apparatus to ten. Overall, department staffing continued to be between fifty-eight and sixty members with fourteen or fifteen members assigned to each shift. Day and night staffing varied between the minimum of twelve people to a maximum of the fourteen or fifteen based on actual shift strength. In two thousand, a weektime daytime-only basic life support rescue vehicle was added to address the increasing call volume and provide relief to the volunteers and career units during the hours when demand for services was at its peak. This rescue would soon be staffed at the ALS level and functioned in that capacity as funding allowed until two thousand twenty. In two thousand two, Chief Struble began advocating for a new fire station to be constructed within six years in the northeast part of town. This station would house the North Farms volunteers as well as a full-time fire department-based transport ambulance. This statement was highlighted in each of the department status reports that were shared with the town council uh every year back then. Career staffing at our volunteer states, I'm sorry, career staffing in our volunteer divisions health was analyzed each year to a great extent in two thousand eleven and twelve. Um, Mr. Chairman, we don't have the ability to screen share. We might have been dropped off as co-presenters. Okay, so as you can see from the timeline, actually, if you get a VAS at slide three. Sorry for that distraction. So as you can see, in this timeline starts in two thousand twelve, we have been discussing and watching for key indicators that trigger the need to add additional career staffing and make adjustments within our volunteer response system. We have been more than met those benchmarks. This chart starts in two thousand twelve and runs through fifteen or five years, which would be two thousand seventeen. Public conversations, including council discussions and approvals and support for the fire station project with funding approval for a feasibility study in two thousand ten, purchase of land in two thousand eleven, architectural design in two thousand twelve, construction bid and rebids in thirteen and fourteen, and final construction approval in two thousand fifteen. At each point of these discussions, we highlighted the need for increasing staff for both an additional ambulance and career staff on a fire engine. This staffing conversation and model that started in two thousand two was finally brought into fruition in two thousand twenty. Reality is that we have seen three-decade-long reduction in volunteer responders while at the same time being challenged with emergency incidents more than doubling. There were many attempts to address the staffing shortfall in the years between two thousand and two thousand twenty. These include the additional daytime rescue, EMS enterprise, a variety of weekday, weekend, and nighttime staffing matrices. Each attempt offered temporary solutions, but never fully addressed the problem. In two thousand eighteen, we organized a problem and goal statement. This included the need to increase career fire and rescue capacity and availability. This was to address the clustering of calls that happened predominantly during the daytime, as well as a continued increase in call volume, address the three-decade-long trend in reduce, reduction of volunteer membership, as well as the townwide coverage when career engines were operating on limited access highways and on mutually assignments out of town. This also in this list was reduce the response time to all incidents, and specifically those incidents in the north or the northern part of town, provide a timely backup coverage in the Yalesville section of town, increase the availability of advanced life support twenty-four seven townwide, increase transport capacity by adding two ambulances twenty-four seven, address the short shortage of firefighter paramedics. We're unable to hire, and we'll talk more about that in a few moments. Reduce the number of paramedics needed on duty without reducing ALS capacity, in other words, becoming more efficient in that area. Provide the same or increased ALS capacity with more efficiency. Provide the appropriate level of response and care based on patient needs. So we shift from sixty percent ALS treatment and transport to forty percent, reducing cost for twenty percent of our patients, as well as providing less invasive care when the patients, when it's appropriate, and avoid reduction in services due to funding variations that we've experienced over those years. At this point, I'd like to pass it to Deputy Chief Setnar. He and Deputy Chief Wilson will continue giving you more detail.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, counselors. Uh, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present to you, the council members, an operational update and overview on the new response model and staffing plan that the Department of Fire and Emergency Services implemented on July first twenty twenty with the support of the mayor, town council, and the bargaining unit IFFF Local thirteen twenty-six. Our new record management system, known as ESO, was fully implemented on September first, twenty twenty. This has given us several months of solid runtime data with analytics that will provide evidence that supports a positive impact the current response model and staffing plan is having on service delivery and the resource management. This overview that we're presenting here tonight will provide information on the redistricting of the response districts in town, the addition of a new engine company, Engine Three, which provides faster service delivery response in the northern and northeast part of town while providing timely backup response capabilities to Yalesville section and the northwest part of town. The current response and staffing model firmly establishes paramedic service on all three career engine companies with additional paramedic response capability with an EMS lieutenant during the week that allows us to cover up to four ALS calls concurrently. The BLS Transport Division was formed and implemented with two full-time transport ambulances. The position of an EMS officer was also created to supervise Wallingford Fire Department EMS operations and enhanced fire ground operations. We also completed the purchase and placed in the service of a multi-functional apparatus called a Quint engine with an aerial device, and this enhances our ability to perform aerial operations if the ladder truck is not available. The chief officers are your professional fire and emergency services administrators. We continually monitor service delivery to ensure effectiveness and quality. The current and previous administrations have demonstrated the ability to adapt to the needs and expectations of the community with delivery of vital, value-added services that most fire and emergency services don't or can't deliver. We do this while keeping per capita costs at or below the industry average, all while providing a revenue stream for ambulance transport and paramedic service, which contributes one point seven to one point eight million dollars to the town's general fund annually. There have been numerous studies over the last twenty years that consisted of SWAT analysis, project reports, strategic plans, and consultant studies evaluating service delivery challenges. evaluating service delivery challenges, the needs and expectations of the community, and translating it into how we should operate. In 1999, the Wallingford Fire Department report on current conditions and recommendations on staffing was authored by Fire Chief Wayne LaFavor. In 2002, a consultant company Shoreline Associates performed a study which recommended changes. That was with Chief Strubel. In 2005, the Volunteer Division SWAT analysis was completed by the fire administrators. In 2011, the consultant company Shoreline Associates provided a Volunteer Division SWAT analysis with recommendations. 2012, fire administrators developed a five-year transition plan for the department. 2014, a strategic plan was developed, implemented, and recently completed. 2021, a new five-year strategic plan is almost complete and is planned to be implemented this year. As you see on the slide, slide present right now, in August of 2012, Chief Strubel developed this five-year transition plan to address volunteer division challenges and service delivery needs. Several of the recommendations listed were eventually phased in by 2020. In 2015, the Yaleville Volunteer Company 5 was consolidated with the North Farms Volunteer Company 7. In 2016, the construction of a new station 7 was started with Chief Highgard overseeing this project. In 2017, East Wallingford Volunteer Fire Department Station 8 had in addition to the station, along with renovations, that was done to support volunteer staffing. In 2017, the new station 7 was completed. A full-time career ambulance was assigned there to enhance ambulance service to the community. In 2018, Truck 1, the ladder truck, was reassigned to Station 7 in order to reduce response time to emergencies in that response district. In July 1st, 2020, Engine 3, the new career engine company, was established at Station 7 to provide fire and paramedic service to this district of town that consistently had the longest response time to emergencies. The chief officers, your professional fire administrators, continually monitor the operational quality of the fire and emergency services delivery by reviewing data and analytics from our record management system. We analyze call volume, type of call, reaction time, response time, location, time of day, day of the week, as well as employee training and performance measures. Decreasing response times by reducing the reaction time and adding an additional response unit were goals that were accomplished. Another goal was to address the extended response times to the northern and northeastern part of the town, which has seen a lot of commercial growth and activity, as well as lengthy response times to the I-91 district. We reviewed how to handle the back-to-back and clustering of calls to look for more efficient ways to ensure the correct responses were being sent to the right calls. We have addressed firefighter safety issues such as eliminating radio dead spots and increased available information for responders with new technology, putting tablets into the apparatus and with new pre-planning tools. We continually strive on how to best utilize our limited resources to ensure we are able to deliver the value-added service to the community. Fire department call volume roughly doubled in the last 30 years. Staffing and service delivery changes were implemented in reaction to this increasing request for service. However, these, most of the changes, such as adding Rescue 3 as a BLS unit, then as an ALS unit, adding a paramedic to Engine 1, adding a part-time ambulance were subject to fiscal constraints and intended to be short-term fixes, while several long-term solutions were created but never implemented. Comprehensive consultant reports were commissioned and completed in 2002 and 2011, suggesting changes to the department. Most were not implemented for various reasons. Strategic plans were created and carried out through SWAT analysis that were performed every couple of years. The current strategic plan is being completed, and a new one is in process of being published, although COVID pandemic has had an impact on its completion. The computer-aided dispatch change CAD gave us the opportunity to purchase and install tablets in our vehicles and apparatus, as well as monitors in the stations. This helped to shave one minute off the reaction response time to emergency incidents on average. When Station 7 was completed in 2017, a full-time ambulance was placed there. The part-time ambulance was assigned to Central Fire Headquarters. On July 1st, 2020, operation of two full-time BLS ambulances with EMTs was started. Implementation of three career paramedic engine companies that were strategically placed at fire stations in town to improve response time to emergencies. Medic 2, assigned to Central Fire Headquarters, became the second full-time ambulance. The redistricting of the response areas was completed in town for enhanced service delivery. The new career engine company, Engine 3, was assigned to the new Station 7. We work with the CAD and GIS map vendor to redistrict the town into three career response districts based on response times, call volume, second and third do apparatus needs. Engine 3 is an enhanced fire pumper referred to as a Quint. This combines the attributes of a pumper and an aerial ladder. Engine 3 is staffed with four-person crew. This apparatus has improved the response times to this long, underserved area town, the northern and northeast part. The response times previously were typically over 10 minutes. Today, they're just over four minutes, drastically improving the service delivery in this area. I-91 now has a very quick response time because of Engine 3. All three career engines now have onboard extrication capabilities for motor vehicle accidents. This helps to allow other apparatus to free up to respond to other emergencies during high call volume. Since Engine 3 was placed into service, it has been first do with several structured fires, arriving on scene in four to five minutes, in comparison to the 10-minute-plus response time previously. Engine 3 is also second doing the northwest part of town, Yalesville, for recent structure fires there. The new delivery, new service delivery model places firefighter paramedics on all three career engines. When the emergency incident requires ALS intervention, which is 33% of the calls, the paramedic will ride in on the ambulance. The engine company is still available to respond to other emergency responses, including BLS calls and fires, and that has been demonstrated many times. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Wilson, and he'll continue.
Thank you, Chief. As professional fire administrators, plans are implemented and evaluated and backed up by statistical analysis. In July 1st of 2020, with the new record management system ESO, we were able to accomplish this need. Implementation began on an incremental scale and was fully operational by September 1st of 2020. ESO now provides the fire department with outstanding analytics for us as fire professionals to review performance and determine if, when, and how changes are needed and plan for future delivery needs. What you see on your screen is two graphs, and the presented, these graphs are presented, they're examples of analytics that we evaluate. In this instance, we are evaluating the 2018 decision to advocate for and implement a computer-aided dispatch upgrade that would allow us to have technology that would decrease response times. This is accomplished by providing the tools for dispatchers to process calls quicker and more efficiently. Additionally, this upgrade gave the fire department the ability to put computer tablets in all apparatus and live status monitors in stations. This technology allows responders to review the emergency calls as it is being processed by the emergency dispatcher. Information is populated on the monitors, thus giving advance notice to the appropriate responding units. This implementing implementation, coupled with a mandated pre-Lear system, has proven to save over a minute off of the reaction time and turnout time, which doesn't seem like a vast change, but when dealing with life and death emergencies, minutes and seconds count. This also positively affects first apparatus arrival times, as you can see. The Wallingford Fire Department arrives, on average, within four minutes and 49 seconds from the time in which they are notified. Wallingford Fire Department and its chief officers have the mission to provide stable and sustainable staffing to service the growing demands of our community. This has caused staffing management to be somewhat of a moving target over the last 30 years. In 2020, the Wallingford Fire Department responded to 6,306 emergencies. This volume has steadily climbed over the last 30 years, and trend data suggests that we will continue to see this rise in service demands. Additionally, the Wallingford Fire Department finds that the highest demand for assistance is during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., as you can see from the graph above. The surging call volume at this time, coupled with the status of daytime volunteers and acquisition of Hunter's ambulance by Hartford Healthcare, have us evaluating unique staffing options such as the addition of a daytime ambulance. This is all part of an annual review of our performance and the cost to the community. In comparison, the Wallingford Fire Department is delivering service per capita at or below the cost of other communities. This is while providing vital public safety emergency services, which includes three paramedic engine companies strategically located, one of which was recently implemented in northeast part of town, two transport ambulances 24/7, again strategically located for responses within the community, the addition of an EMS officer who works Monday through Friday, providing ALS capacity, as well as firefighting manpower, extrication capabilities on all three engine companies, along with heavy rescue capabilities and technical rescue on Truck 1. Additionally, the Wallingford Fire Department maintains technical rescue capabilities in rope rescue, confined space, and hazardous materials emergency mitigation. As I just mentioned, staffing has been an ongoing conversation over 30 years. The bug, the above graph depicts changes in both the career and volunteer division in that timeframe. Again, as professional fire administrators, it is our duty to not only staff for current demand, but to ensure long-term sustainability of the services your fire department provides. Over the past decade, we have experienced extreme difficulty in recruiting and hiring qualified firefighter paramedic candidates in the career department. The last two testing processes provided us with only two candidates for interviews after each process. One conditional offer has been made from the most recent process. Additionally, we have had an opening since December of 2019 from a retirement that we have not been able to fill. This affects the fire departments both locally and nationally. This is largely due to the fact that on, in order to qualify, a candidate must have attended approximately one and a half years of paramedic school and met CPAT requirements. Once hired, if the candidate does not possess the minimum fire certifications, they will be required to attend additional fire training. The impact of COVID and cancer awareness in the fire service has hurt recruitment, not only in the career division, but in the volunteer division as well. Volunteer recruitment and retention nationally and locally has been on a steady decline for more than three decades. This is in part due to the demanding training requirements to meet minimum professional standards, the cost of training and equipment, and personal time constraints. Additionally, low SAP and tax abatement incentives have not been as effective as desired, and the number of volunteer first responders continues to decline, and the membership continues to age. In order to combat this challenge, a low SAP committee has been formed, and funding is being requested to help train, recruit, for training recruitment and retention in fiscal year 2122. Chief Setnar is now going to take you through our new staffing delivery.
Thank you, Chief Wilson. The new service delivery model places firefighter paramedics on all the three career engines. If the emergency incident requires ALS care, the paramedic will ride in on the ambulance. The engine company is still available in town to respond to other emergencies, including the BLS calls and fires. As I stated, it has been demonstrated many times. We've had to address the shortage of firefighter paramedics that Chief Wilson just talked about. This is a local and a national issue. The availability of these skilled workers is in demand and short in supply. We've been able to find, we have been unable to find qualified candidates for the open positions. We did just do a conditional job offer for one. This also was part of the reason the service delivery model was adapted so that the overall, less paramedics that we have would be needed in the department by having EMTs handle the appropriate BLS emergency calls, which are over 60% of the EMS calls, and keeping firefighter paramedics available for the roughly 40% ALS emergency incidents. This is a better use of the resources for the community. We also created a new position, the EMS lieutenant. This EMS officer works Monday through Friday, providing supervisory oversight to the entire EMS program, which includes the paramedics delivering ALS care, the EMTs delivering BLS care, and the ambulance transport services. He also oversees the EMS QA-QI program and medical supply inventory. The EMS lieutenant also responds to emergency calls during the day when call volume is high to provide additional ALS capacity, as well as capacity for firefighting manpower. The new staffing model allows the Wallingford Fire Department to cover more calls that are ALS. Under the new staffing model, Wallingford Fire Department is able to cover up to four consecutive ALS emergencies on day shifts and three on night shifts. Under the old model, the Wallingford Fire Department was able to cover three consecutive ALS emergencies on day shifts and only two consecutive ALS calls on night shifts. Briefly looking at the slide, you can see the old staffing model. Weekdays, we used to staff at 16. Where six members were on two ambulances and a paramedic rescue, generally only leaving 10 members available for major incidents or fires. During the weekends, during the day, we had staffing at 14, where four members were on two ambulances, leaving generally only 10 members available for major incidents and fires. And on nights and holidays, staffing is at, was at 12. Two members on one ambulance, and generally only 10 members may be available for fires. And the old staffing model was subject to budget constraints. The new staffing model, we now have 17 members on duty, days and nights. Four members on two ambulances, and generally 13 members may be available for major incidents and fires. Daytime, Monday through Friday, we have 18 on duty. Four members on two ambulances, generally 14 members may be available for fires. This is including EMS lieutenant, where he's available for fire suppression, as well as the fourth paramedic available during the week. We now have the new staffing model, and essentially, we have 17 to 18 members on duty at all times, increasing the availability of personnel and apparatus to respond with this new staffing model. Chief Wilson, I'll pass it over to you.
As Chief Setnar described, staffing changes to combat the numerous challenges of an ever-evolving system need to be made for long-term sustainability. In order to evaluate those changes as professionals in fire administration, we employ an empirical method tied items such as staff, system status management, efficiency, and effectiveness. As previously noted, the Wallingford Fire Department's call volume has doubled in the last 30 years. In 2020, the Wallingford Fire Department responded to 6,306 calls for service. As you can see in the supplied graph and table, EMS calls for service remain to be over 80% of the department's total call volume. This is, this is not to be overshadowed by the fact that Wallingford Fire Department has saved life and/or property on 140 fire scenes in 2020. As previously described, it is our job to get the right responder with the right skill level to the right call 100% of the time. This isn't an easy task. It takes constant review, data analysis, and the measures of cost versus benefits to the community. So maybe the reason why we're here today and the, you know, the thing that we must ask ourselves emphatically is, is the system working? That's why we are here today. It's not just to provide a resounding yes to the council and to the citizens, but it's to provide true answers backed by facts and statistics and statistical analysis. The only way to answer this question is through empirical evidence. Qualitative data comes in the nature of conversation with the men and women providing the service every single day. We talk with our battalion chiefs about staffing and manpower. We observe daily operations. The conversation has been greatly positive in nature regarding staffing and service delivery with the people that have boots on the ground. But the true quantitative analysis is where we solidify the proof and concept. Monthly quantitative analysis takes place and is evaluated by the chief officers. Monthly quantitative analysis takes place and is evaluated by the chief officers. The numbers you are viewing are the most recent evaluation of this data, which is cumulative from July first. When we started this new service delivery model up until March fifteenth of twenty twenty. Again, or twenty twenty-one, excuse me. Again, I provided this to Chief Higard specifically every month. All the way up until the date of this presentation. In this particular timeframe, four thousand thirty-six EMS calls for service were requested by a nine-one-one. Of those requests, a paramedic was dispatched, one thousand five hundred and twenty of those nine-one-one requests. This was part of our CAD upgrade is getting the right people with the right certification to the right call. This marks the first successful change in service delivery by sending the right skill level to the right calls. Prior to seven-one twenty twenty, WFD would have committed at least two paramedics to all four thousand and thirty-six calls. And three paramedics. To the one thousand five hundred and twenty calls. I'm gonna break that down just because that seems like it could be a little even confusing as I'm saying it. We went to a total of four thousand thirty-six calls in that timeframe under the old model. We sent two paramedics all the time. And then on the ALS calls, we would send that third paramedic on an engine company. So we're sending three paramedics to ALS calls, dispatched ALS calls. The old system falsely increased the demand for paramedics while decreasing paramedic and firefighter availability. In the same timeframe, WFD responded to two thousand, or excuse me, transported two thousand four hundred and forty-nine. Of the four thousand thirty-six EMS calls. Of these transports, one thousand forty-one were ALS. This means that paramedics ride in four times per twenty-four hour period. This simply, this simply put means that one firefighter paramedic is out of service to transport four times per day. This improves the previous system prior to seven-one twenty twenty. Because then two firefighter paramedics were out of service ten times per day. So let me say that again, under the old service, ten times per day, two firefighter paramedics. Were out of service transporting patients versus now four times per day, one firefighter paramedic is out of service to transport a patient. This new service delivery is also giving way to paramedics self-regulating appropriate field treatment. Under the old model, if paramedics arrived and the call was BLS, the paramedic still continued treatment. And were unavailable for other ALS emergencies. They would just treat them BLS, but they would ride into the hospital out of, out of service, two of them. As seen in our statistical analysis of the one thousand five hundred and twenty paramedic requests. Paramedic care was only required one thousand three hundred and fifty times. In synopsis, we are sending par- we're sending paramedics to a hundred percent of our call volume when in reality. They only provide ALS care on thirty-three percent of the nine-one-one call volume. We recognize this as a way to more appropriately manage a vital resource for our town. When the career engine loans their paramedic to the ambulance, the engine was placed out of service in CAD only. So term we use for CAD and emergency dispatchers. This is done so that if the next call recommends ALS, the next available paramedic engine company will be dispatched. The remaining staff and manpower is not out of service. And are available to respond to BLS emergencies, service calls, structure fires. And all other emergencies and service requests in the town of Wallingford. Lastly is the performance of our transport capabilities. Is another measurement of departmental efficiency. And over, on average, over sixty percent of our EMS requests require transport to area hospitals. As seen in twenty twenty-one status report, over seventy percent of those transports go to mid-state medical center in Meriden. This fact allows our transport unit to return to service faster due to the fact that they can easily respond from the hospital during peak hours. In fiscal year nineteen twenty, the Wallingford Fire Department collected and returned one million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. To general fund based on transport services provided. Projections for fiscal year twenty twenty-one look to be similar despite the improvements in our service delivery. As previously stated, quantitative data analysis suggests that a third daytime ambulance. Might be needed to continue improving service delivery to the community while providing a self-sustainable revenue stream. These numbers are continually being evaluated for future discussions. So this is Chief Higard in closing. Every community approaches fire protection and emergency services in their own unique way. There must be a balance between efficiency and capacity. The best response happens when every member, career and volunteer, is available within the station and apparatus are waiting for the next call. The highest efficiency happens when everybody's engaged in work at all times with little or no extra staff. Our challenge is to find the correct balance between the two. The target is continually moving, we must react and adapt as we have resetting with the staffing and response district changes we've made. So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this opportunity to highlight how our department has made these recent changes, how we're staffed. And I welcome any questions that counselors may have.
Well, all right. It looks like Counselor Fishbein has questions and then Counselor Laffin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen, you know, I thank you very much for that presentation. Must have taken a long time to put together. Very informative, a lot of information. Is it possible that you could send that to us so that, um. You know, I'm sure members of the public and, you know, we can get that out and there's areas that I want to look at on there. Is that possible?
Yes, Counselor, we, uh, we actually sent out a status report today as well that works in concert with this. And we will, uh, through the chair, we'll issue this PowerPoint presentation to you.
Great, yeah, I did see your status report early on today. Um, just wanna, you know, the volunteer situation, I know, um, a few times was mentioned that. Over the last three decades, there's been decline and I just, I'd like to explore. That for a moment, my understanding is that in Wallingford. We have a tax abatement program to incentivize that activity. Uh, but we don't have a stipend program. Is that fair?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, um, through Mayor Dickinson, we have just established what's called a low SAP committee. That's the pension system, if you will. There is a tax abatement as well as the pension system. That committee's charge is to review all incentives and for recruitment and retention of members. So that it's a wide-ranging, um, catch-all for looking at exactly what you're pointing to. Some mechanisms, uh, with all options on the table for discussion.
Okay, just wanna bring to your attention tomorrow, um, you know, the Public Safety Committee in Hartford, we're, we're voting on a bill to. Uh, make the stipend paid to volunteers, uh, tax deductible. So, you know, that's something I want to bring to your attention. We've been talking about that a lot, incentivize. Because other towns are having this issue as well. The, um, if I wanted to become a, a volunteer. Um, I need a level of training. I need certain things to happen in order for you to accept me. Do, do I pay for that stuff upfront? Or is there a, like a scholarship program that the town has? How does that work?
So we've, we've been through many different, um, ways of doing this. In their budget request that you'll be seeing, um, we put in monies, we requested monies. So that we could sponsor up to ten firefighters and ten EMS responders. Uh, in, so twenty people in total with all the training costs upfront for them. So, so to answer your question, we're, we're hoping with funding on July first, we'll be able to front pay. So nobody has to reach into their pocket for those costs for, for the turnout gear, training for either the EMS divi- uh, track. Or the firefighting track, or certain individuals may choose to go down both paths. But our goal for this, uh, recruitment drive that again, we're working with the volunteer leadership on. Is to recruit twenty new members, ten fire and at least ten EMS with all expenses covered.
Yeah, I thank you for sending that flyer. Uh, we got that today and I did post that around. So maybe you'll get some activity out of that. Um, you know, one of my concerns with the scholarship program. I'm sure you've discussed this is that, uh, we pay for those individuals to do. Get that training and perhaps they go to a different town. Uh, we don't want that to happen either, so I would hope that you have some sort of a, a clawback provision with regard to, to, to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, yes, that's been one of our challenges all along. And again, we've always been looking for what is the best method. Because the town has had great expense, uh, with no return on investment. For past people that we've trained when we paid upfront in the past. So we'd like to streamline that and improve. So we do have, to your point, protect our money while at the same time breaking down that barrier that's. Blocking people from becoming members. So we're trying to find the best balance between those two.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that's really easy, you know, we just, it's part of the contract. We'll pay for you to get this training. You know, so long as you give us service of at least five years. Um, otherwise, you know, you're gonna owe it back to us, um, something like that. But anyway. Um, that's all I had. Uh, I thank you once again very much for this presentation here tonight. And thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Fishbein was saying regarding the volunteers. Um, and I think there's a lot going on and, uh, with the presentation and everything. So that, that's all important as well. Um, so Chief, um. Chief Hargard, how, when, how long have you been chief?
I've been chief, uh, since two thousand fourteen, uh, summertime, so just over six years.
Yeah, and then you, but you were deputy chief before that, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, uh, and Deputy Chief Centaur, you, you've been deputy chief for how many years?
Counselor, I've been, uh, chief for, deputy chief for six and a half years.
And then, uh, Deputy Chief Wilson, it's been last time, but how long have you been deputy chief?
Just a little bit over a year.
Yeah, um, so. So I've been, I've been on the council for, we're talking about like ten years or something now. And the, I'm not really looking for the, I've been around for these five years that we've been talking about and all the different chiefs and everything. Um, all these plans and everything, um. And, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be honest. So I've been asking a lot of questions since this started breaking. And I thought maybe this presentation was gonna be, uh, sort of an outreach proactive. Way to break down, um, some of the concerns. And, and I think, you know, to be honest, I'm a little more, I'm just a little more frustrated. And annoyed more than I was before. Um, today we got an eighteen-page document. Um, you know, I got in the middle of the workday, did not get through it. And I was like, you know what, it's probably okay because that's gonna be the presentation. So that wasn't the presentation. Part of it's in there. I, it's what I was able to skim. And there's some charts at the end that are woven around and it's just kind of like all over the place. And, you know, here's the thing, I still don't get why we're a million dollars. Over budget then. In all of this.
Uh, Counselor, I, I don't think we're a million dollars over budget. I don't know where that's coming from.
It's, it's the, the request that we've made over the past several months. To realign the, I'm sorry, million dollars over budget in the, in the payroll area. Um, that's what I'm trying to figure out with this, with this, with this model.
Uh, so, so Counselor, we're, you, from the council, we've been approved two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, not a million dollars, not even close. So two hundred and thirteen thousand. And I, I, I confessed or I, I fessed up at the last, uh, discussion. Um, the budget present preparation last year, um, happened at a time when I lost my father three weeks prior to the budget submission. Taking care of my elderly mother at the same time. So that was a mistake that I made. I did not submit two hundred thousand dollars in the replacement pay line that should have been. So at this point, we're basically thirteen thousand beyond that budget expectation.
So we did not talk about the million, a million dollars with the eight hundred dollar transfer, eight hundred thousand dollar transfers and the two before that and all that stuff. That was, that wasn't the last meeting or two meetings ago.
We never transferred eight hundred thousand. I don't know where that number's coming from.
Total, sure, okay. All right, keep going, sorry to interrupt.
No, I, because the only money we, we've transferred, we know, we moved money within our budget and as we explained, so if you have open positions, we have general wages. And that would cover replacement pay. Outside of the fire department budget, we've only been funded by the town council for two hundred and thirteen thousand. So that is our true overage past the budget. Uh, we do anticipate if things don't change, uh, that we are gonna come in very close to that funding that you've approved already with no additional request for funding. So, uh, that is because when this budget was presented last year. We, we talked about the fact there's a lot of unknowns with this new staffing model. We needed experience. We didn't have any experience with this staffing model with replacement positions. Uh, and it only comes with time to see how the, the membership is, open positions, injuries, what factors. In the past, we were in that staffing model for twenty years. It was brought right down to a science. Um, we're working to give you an answer. In the last eight years, our budgets are roughly half a percent. Of surplus money at the end of those budgets. So if you take those eight years, you look at what was requested, look what was funded and what was surplus or not spent at the end of the year, we're about a half percent. What that means is there's absolutely no contingency within the fire department budget for the eight previous years. So when this year happened, we have no monies to make up for any shortfalls. And as previously mentioned, we had four long-term injuries and two open positions that we've been working through. So, and again, uh, we've only overspent our budget and I don't mean to diminish two hundred thousand dollars in the slightest. But the eight hundred thousand that you're, I, I believe that you're referencing was what is in the replacement pay line funded in our budget. And we've only requested the two hundred and thirteen thousand additional dollars.
All right, I'll come back to that later. The, so let's, can we, with this new model. Um, so recently in the news, it's the Laurel Drive or Laurel Lane, whatever it is. Um, how, you know, maybe for the, for the laypeople like us, like how did, how did this model. Roll out with, with this fire, which was, which is significant and, and everybody's talking about. Can, is, is there a way that you can break it down operationally?
Sure, the, the dispatched units would be all three career engines, which is engine one, two, three, ladder truck, which is career. And the volunteer squad eight and engine eight, which are located in Condracki Lane. Uh, just the matter of how units responded. Engine two was working a brush fire at the town line on Tuttle Avenue. Um, at the Chester Town Line at the time of this fire. So the response that came in, engine one from Main Street was first arriving. Right on their heels was engine eight, the volunteer engine. And then engine three that came out of the station seven on North Farms Road. And the last arriving engine was engine two that came from, again, the Chester Town Line. Uh, the additional staffing that came in would have been that extra engine that would not have been available in the past. We also had dispatch.
And sorry, and why, and why again, just to, to be extra clear and why would that not have been available in the past?
Uh, there was not staffed. We only had two career engines in the past. So that's part of this new staffing model. We have three additional firefighters staffing and extra engine over the previous model. And then, so the last piece that was responding in this incident was, uh, the medic unit that responded with two EMTs. That provides EMS for either fire victims, casualties or firefighter injuries. As the incident progressed, we automatically call in Meriden for mutual aid. They cover our rapid intervention team and they take care of firefighters that get trapped or injured on the fire scene. And that's a course of normal action. We do that at every structure fire. Engine seven out of the North Farm Station also responded. And, uh, ambulance eleven, which is a volunteer staffed ambulance, also responded. They ended up not. Sorry, that's in the North Farm Station as well. And they weren't needed for EMS care, so the two firefighter EMTs, the volunteers assisted in the command role at that scene. The volunteers, engine seven supplied a second, uh, water supply line to the attack pumpers. Which, uh, engine eight also supplied engine one, the first arriving engine. So all hands were working, Meriden engine, uh, second Meriden engine came in to cover the town for additional calls that may happen during that incident. And might I add that the, the, the cohesiveness between the volunteers, career staff and the Meriden staff was phenomenal. And for the south fire, in a wind-driven fire, it was, it was absolute phenomenal fire care. Fire attack was amazing.
And no, and it sounds like it was a great combination, uh, you know, where the volunteers. Combination, you know, where the volunteers were able to. To come in and. Assist the career guys. And, and help the situation. You know, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna come back around. I know other people. Want to speak. You know, it's just. There's a lot of, just, there's a lot of information. Kind of all at the last minute. I definitely, as Counselor Fishman said, would appreciate. That PowerPoint presentation forwarded over us. It's, it's tricky now, especially with all the, the virtual and remote meetings. And trying to catch up on everything. I'm just trying to figure out what we got out of this. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set for now.
The, the PowerPoint has to become part of the minutes anyway, so.
Yeah.
Counselor Tata is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Chiefs. Thank you. I, I did, I did get the chance to look over. The presentation you sent us earlier today. So thank you for that. That was helpful. One question, and this is just more curiosity, but. I saw in tonight's presentation, it was also the one that we received earlier today. The call volume is, is going up a lot. I believe you said over the past several decades, actually. Do you know why the call volume is increasing so, so drastically? Because it doesn't seem like it's. The population, I don't think, is increasing at the same rate. So I'm just wondering what the reason for that is.
It's, it's a fantastic question, and that's one of the things that we're always watching is the trends. Ironically, since 1987, the fire tech, technically the fire calls, that's the motor vehicle accidents, fire incidents, brush fires, garage fires, dumpsters. All those activities between 1,100 and 1,500 calls, and that hasn't changed since 1987. All of our increase at that time, by the way, there was 50% EMS and 50% fire calls. So we did roughly 2,800 calls total back in those days. What's gone up exponentially, well, not exponentially, but in, in, is all the medical calls. So to answer your question, it's an aging population. As why, as well as societal changes. At my age, there was very few times when my parents would ever even consider dialing. There was no 911 system. They wouldn't call for an ambulance. You were put in the back of the Chevy and you were sent to the hospital. And that's changed over the years that. With the prevalence of 911 systems availability, the marketing, ambulance care has gone drastically up. Because again, it's paramedicine offered and the amount of intervention that is allowed or performed in the street at the initial arrival is, is just not. The same as it was back then. So it's strictly the EMS side of things that has gone up, which has increased that call volume to where we are today.
Great, thank you. That makes sense. Sorry, I think I lost my camera here. My other question is about, oh, we'll say we're back. My other question is. In response to Counselor Laffin's question about the budget, and I. I'm assuming he's probably looking for that info now, but I also recalled, I, I thought it was more than 213. I thought we had been talking about. 600 or 800,000, and I thought of a chunk of that, maybe the 213, but I thought a good chunk of that came from the general contingency. Do you know how much of it, I, I don't recall it. I mean, I'm glad if it did come from with the New York Department, but I'm wondering how, I, I do believe a big chunk of that came from general contingency. Do you know what that amount was off the top of your head? And if not, it's okay. I was just. Wondering.
I have a lot of paperwork here and I do have those numbers, but, so what happened was we initially identified. That we may have a shortfall of up to $650,000. So that's one of the reasons you have a large number in mind. So we had a tranche, as Mr. Bose described it, sent in. And then we went a second time last month, the month before with a second, that second tranche took 70,000 from the town budget. And 80,000 was moved from within the fire department budget. For a total outside contribution from the town is at 213,000. And again, our, as our numbers, as we get closer, we have 13 pay weeks left in this year. As we moved closer to that end date, we can get true and truer numbers. We also have monies within the fire department budget that will be able to be freed up. So we've gained ground in our general wages, for example. We have other payroll lines that are underused because we have less members, those open positions and whatnot. So. When we true up our numbers, we're going to be able to move more money to cover the replacement pay shortfall. Our goal is to make eight more weeks with the funding that we have in replacement pay. Then that leaves five weeks that's unfunded per se. And we're going to look for our monies first. But we're, so we started at 650, the conversation at our last meeting with you. When we transferred the money, we dropped that expected shortfall down. And, and now the last time we come to you will be a very true number to make it to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And I, I, you don't have to go too much into this, because I, I believe we did talk about it last time. We met, but the replacement pay that happened this year. Is, do you expect it to be that high next year? Was that, I think you said it was mostly because of. COVID and vacation times because vacations weren't as staggered as they would be. So do you think that replacement pay line will? Be as large next year?
Well, we're not, we don't want to go into next year with a shortfall like we did this year. So we've true up the numbers of what we should have requested last year, which, which would have been a million dollars instead of the 800,000 that was requested. So that is going to be in the request. In addition to that, we're, we're, we've done, we don't want to come in with a shortfall again. So when you guys, when you see the budget, it'll be with truer numbers. And I think at that time, we should. Speak more clearly about that funding request.
Right, okay.
Chairman. Mayor speaking.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I, I just think, and it was explained at the time, but it's easy to forget a lot of these things. There was a, a circumstance of four, four injuries, which was far more than what. Is usually being experienced. And I think the $600,000 figure was based upon if those. If those people are out of work. Through most of this year. I think that was something like $10,000 a week. That was the replacement pay impact. That has not been the case and people are coming back to work. But, and a, a, out of the ordinary number of, of injured personnel. Was a significant part of what the concern was.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's it. And I think one of your trucks may have gone by about 10 minutes ago while you were speaking too. So they're, they're always, they're always on call. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I, I've been having interweb issues here. I don't have, I, I guess I just, two quick comments. I think this agenda item, I, I love this agenda item and I want to thank Chief Hargard and his whole team. Because I think this is, this is good. I appreciate you doing this now before the budget workshop, because it certainly would have come up in the budget workshop. So I definitely am grateful that, that you, you took the, you know, you were active and took the step to put it on. So I want to thank you for that and thank you for the work. I'm going to echo, you know, I, I kind of feel like Counselor Vice Chair Laffin. You know, to get, and I don't, I think, I don't really, I think it just happened this way. I'm sure you were trying to get this thing, the report put together, but it's a little bit tough as a counselor to get something like this dropped on us six hours before the meeting. If, if you're, if you're a regular viewer of the town council meetings, you will know that, that I've been a user, user of PowerPoint slides. And we were recently told. If we're going to use PowerPoint slides as counselors, we need to get them in ahead of time. Or it was an FOI violation. I believe that is incorrect. Attorney Small, do you want to confirm that? I think you're still on the line that, in fact. If I were to share my screen right now with a PowerPoint deck that I had not told anybody, under the rules of FOI, as long as we got it to the town clerk, it would be legal. Is that correct? It could be posted after the meeting?
Yes, I said it could be. So it's preferable to be before. It actually can be during, which I'm not sure how we would do, but it has to be afterwards.
Understood.
Under these orders, yes.
Understood. And as a courtesy of the chairman and vice chairman, I would obviously try to do it before, but it's just, again, this is what happens sometimes in the council. And again, I don't blame, I think it just happens. I think everyone's busy, everyone's working. I don't blame any one person, but I think it's. It's, it's just tough where I sometimes think that, you know, we're, we're given, where stuff is dropped on our desk. Right before the meeting and, you know, again, I would have wanted more time to digest the report, formulate questions. So. You know, that's just, I want to, I want to support Vice Chair Laffin and what he said, because I felt exactly the same way. I hadn't have time to read it. Until about, you know, 10 minutes before the meeting and I didn't really give it its due diligence. Your presentation itself was very thorough and I appreciate that. But that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I have from the council right now. Anyone from the public have comments or questions? Mr. Garlic, name and address for the record, please.
This is Eddie Garlic, number eight, Bumbaco Drive.
Go ahead.
Okay, so my question is, the new volunteer recruitment and training, the funds that you mentioned tonight. What's the, the overall plan for that? Because it's something brand new. This isn't how it was before.
Yeah, as I mentioned, this is a new strategy. The, it, again, this is subject to funding. So if it survives the budgeting process, we have the money. What it is, is it's earmarked to volunteer training specifically for that goal. And then the. Following Counselor Fishman's recommendations, we need to come up with parameters and a contract, if you will, that. Defines what the relationship is between the recruit and the town of Wallingford. But the funding is again, based on paying for a firefighter one class. With the gear rental or whatever other ancillary costs are associated. We have actually earmarked some of our air packs to be used strictly for training, to make them available for this purpose. And the other option is, or the other piece of that is the EMS training, which is, we're starting with the EMR class already. We'll have a spring and a fall class. And we'll probably sponsor the whole class and hopefully fill the room. But that, that funding again, is to support both an EMS track and a firefighter track.
Okay, and that, and that'll be every year moving forward as long as you can get the funding, like you said?
Well, I certainly want to see the effectiveness. As everything that we described tonight, we, we have to measure. We're spending taxpayer money and we want to make sure that it's being used effectively and efficiently.
Okay, and could you go over the, the recruitment and training program you had in place prior to this announcement for the, for your tenure?
We've had all different incarcerations, our, our different methods. So we've started with a recruitment program. So we actually did a recruitment class here. That was suspended in 2011. Chief Struble stopped that class due to budget constraints in 2011. We then tried, as you know, you sponsored in 2014, one attempt at running that class. And, and most recently, because we've had experience with, as Counselor Fishman mentioned, we've had people that were trained at a substantial cost to the town of Wallingford. And never became active members. So we've had exposure to injury with workman comp coverage during those classes. Gear that was ruined and never benefited from any response on. Again, the return on investment. So we've, we've gone different cycles now. Right now, if you take the classes, we reimburse you for those classes. Station Seven recently submits about $10,000 a year worth of reimbursement for classes that their members take, and we pay for all their classes.
And that's after a year of service or something like that, right? Just to try and make sure that your return is there.
For us right now, it's at completion of class. So as long as you've completed the class and you're an active member, yes.
All right. And then prior to that, it was all out of pocket by the volunteer to the tune of $4,000 or $5,000? And then a year of service?
Not to my knowledge. It's, it's through different, again, it's been all over the map, but anybody that's taken classes, we've, we've made every effort to reimburse them for those classes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, because I know there were a few guys that were still waiting for four or five grand to pay for gateway and gear and air packs and things like that.
As a matter of fact, we haven't had that submission. I talked to Chief Salata about that and he's trying to get the paperwork together and make that submission, because we haven't seen that.
I had a question about car eight. Do you, do you all know how many calls car eight actually covers? And I'm sorry, car eight is the EMS lieutenant. He's a paramedic, right?
That's correct. We don't know how many calls he covers.
I did a FOIA earlier this week. I just wanted to double check my records. It looks like. Over the course of 42 weeks, that car has gone on 42 calls. Does that sound about right?
I couldn't conjecture either way.
Okay, all right. So yeah, the impact of that during the day, I don't know if it's quite as strong as your presentation suggested.
I would think it's, it's based on need. So if he went out 42 times, that's the only amount of times that that surge was needed.
Okay, even with the engines going out of service, I think this year the engines have gone out of service 345 times already?
Yes, as a matter of fact, and if you do math with the amount of days and the amount of out of services, it calculates your first editorial in the paper. We use that number again to validate our analytics. And that came back three times per day. So your numbers actually absolutely match our numbers of four out of service paramedics per day.
You're about four and a half right now. And, and four and a half a day right now, I think it is.
4.1 with the new, with the new FOI that you had, we're at 4.1.
Okay, it was right around there. So that adds up. And they, in the presentation, you all had talked about, and this is confusing to me. I didn't quite understand it. The prior model, paramedics going out of service 10 times per day. And I'm assuming that, that was the ambulance transporting to the hospital on the one ticket or the one call, and you were considering that an out of service. And trying to marry that up with now having four, 4.1 times per day. To gauge the impact of your new model and keeping. Engines in service, firefighters available and paramedics available. Is that right? The 10 times per day was actually. Including the two paramedics or the paramedic and the MT that was on the ambulance going to the hospital and completing that run?
Yeah, actually, there was paramedics on, on the ambulance because of the contractual commitments. It was, it was pretty much staffed always with two paramedics. And yes, when the two paramedics left town, we would go from 12 down to 10 people on duty. Dominantly at nighttime. So it's an exact matrix comparing the four to the 10 times two.
And during the high periods of call volume, you searched resources during the daytime. And you had available firefighter paramedics on rescue three, firefighter paramedics on the second ambulance. Who were all hazards classified firefighter paramedics, right? So. I, I know you all are saying a lot that you're putting the right people on the right scene for the right reason and not over utilizing or under utilizing resources, but. There's no way for you to tell what scene you're going to have until you get there and assess it. So you may roll up and say, well, this is a BLS call. Oh crap, now I've only got BLS ambulance because my ALS engines are out of other calls. Now under this model. Under the old model.
I completely disagree with you. We, we, in most cases, we do because we have CAD. And we use emergency medical dispatch, which is a nationwide program. The dispatchers do some basic questions. They differentiate the response based on ALS versus BLS. So that's what we say.
You've never had to upgrade calls in a hurry and have the ambulance go to the firehouse to pick up a medic or rendezvous en route or have a. Have a patient have an issue on the way with a, with a BLS responder and they didn't have a paramedic on board?
Well, I think that's a baited question. Obviously, the answer is absolute. That happens on.
It is absolutely correct. Yes, there it is.
But it's, but it's a system and it has to be done in a systematic manner. And. So, so again, it's, it's, it's evaluation. This is what fire department professional administrators do. Every department across the country. And you manage with your resources and you send the appropriate, so 60% of the time. The BLS ambulance is the appropriate response and BLS care. And that's what we send versus the 100. And again, we're looking for efficiency. And efficiency comes with. You know, some, sometimes we go with the ALS response and they're not needed. And opposite, we have upgrades. And the upgrades are the, what you talked about, where a BLS call. That the dispatchers might have missed or the communication from the patient wasn't clear to the dispatch center. And those happen. And that's their built system, and that's why we have the capacity that we have.
And under the old model. Yeah, and under the old model, you were able to absorb that rather easily because you always had the most. Qualified all hazards firefighter paramedic on scene where they could. Provide ALS and at the same time, if ALS wasn't needed, a medical response wasn't needed, they could provide the all hazards first responder. Manpower on a fire scene as well. So we've kind of, we've diminished on both ends of the spectrum. I know there's a business model involved. But it's like the, the, the quantification of safety and security, there's got to be a balance. You're going to be safer, you're going to be scarier, and somewhere in the middle is, is the perfect world. And you're applying business models. To fire service now. And I think that's a little dangerous. Because now you may have. Two or three engines out on a call, two or three engines down, manpower. I know you say they're still available, but they're not dispatched on calls. Another engine's dispatched to cover them. And then you might end up with not the right resource at not the right time. And we're talking about life safety here. So that's just my opinion. I know you all have your professional administrative. And we're talking about life safety here. So that's just my opinion. I know you all have your professional administrative, uh, statistics and everything to go by, but thirty years in the fire service.
If I can respond, uh, one of the engines that you're talking about out of service is engine three, which is a four man crew. When it's out of service, it still has a three man crew, which is where every other engine starts at. So it is not in fact out of service. Under the old model, we also had one paramedic ambulance at nighttime. We had two paramedics staffing it, and we may or may not have had an engine that had a paramedic on it. So when that ambulance went out of service, because it went to every call, transporting a B L S patient, when the A L S called, a heart attack or the stroke came in, there was nobody able to respond at the A L S level. That's where we've built in that capacity in the system, where we have three units covering three separate calls at the A L S level. That's what the point of the presentation was. That capacity was not in the old system. Because we might have had four paramedics on duty, but all of them were on two units. So we only could go to surgeon calls.
Your surgeon resources was when it was needed during the daytime, when you had sixteen available firefighter paramedics to cover all hazards, all calls. So you surged your resources and you had that availability. And it wasn't even sixteen, it was probably more like eighteen, because as you're saying, there's two medics per crew. And I don't want to go round and round and take up the council's time. I understand, um, we're going to have differences of opinion here, but um, I think it's a, it's a dangerous game to play. Coming from my experience, my thirty years in the fire service and being on the line for all those years, to try and apply business models to safety, fire safety and life safety. And hope that you're going to have a paramedic available on a fire engine to respond with a B L S ambulance. Hope that paramedic's there when the service that you had before, the paramedic was guaranteed to be there. And it was even, it was guaranteed to be there even more because you were searching resources. As you said in a previous council meeting, you said, yes, I overstaffed during the day to serve resources for public protection. Because it was needed. And now those resources are no longer there, because you reduced the staffing, you've gone B L S. Maybe the stats are telling you one thing and what's happening on the street is something else. I'm not sure, but I appreciate your time and it's okay that we don't agree. Um, but that's just where I'm, where I'm coming from. So, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair.
So Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to that, this is not a business model at all. This is professional analytics and evaluation from professional fire administrators that are educated, trained. And, uh, in the previous, uh, Chief Struble is a adjunct professor in fire administration. He's taught this to hundreds of students across the country. Our model is based on consultant studies, on professional consultants, as in Chief Struble, who teach this subject. This is not a business model. This is fire administration. And I disagree vehemently with that Mr. Garlic's comments.
Duly noted. Uh, I see no further requests for comment in the chat bar. Just gonna see if anybody out in telephone land wants to comment. The answer appears to be no. Chief, uh, thank you for your presentation. A lot of information there and, uh, thank you for taking care of the town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity.
Certainly. All right, with that, um, Mayor, do we have anything for item ten?
Not for ten.
Okay, then, uh, we need a motion on number eleven, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred and six B in section one dash two twenty-five F for discussion regarding the pending claims and litigation involving Covanta and the disposal agreements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none nays, I presume that we are all in agreement to go into executive session. Uh, if you are not participating in the executive session, kindly exit the meeting. Do I know who user is?
Now be recorded.
We have a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
All at once.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Deb, take your pick as to who made the motion and who seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none. Well, thank you all for sticking around for the end of the meeting. There being no further business on the agenda, I declare the meeting adjourned. And I will stop the recording and end the meeting.